Okay.
I am.
You ready for roll call?
Mayor Bridget Keating.
President.
Vice Mayor Kristi Mossbach.
Here.
President Pro Ten Taylor-Materio.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory Freebold. Councilmember John Maples.
Here.
All right. We stand for a moment of silence. I'd like to. Like to remember Gloria Scafo, sixty-two years old, passed on eight sixteen twenty twenty-five, is Joe's cousin. We also lost Robert Robbie Pollan, August twentieth twenty twenty-five, sixty-six years old. He's our utility field supervisor's father. Albert Cruz, he's sixty years old, passed on August eighth, the twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-five. He's our utility service technician's.
Uncle.
Uncle. Let us all remember. Pastor Stan.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's look to the Lord. My son, if you would accept my words and store up my commands within you, turning your ear to wisdom and applying your heart to understanding. Indeed, if you would call out for insight, cry aloud for understanding, if you would look for it as silver, search for it as hidden treasure, then you would understand the fear of the Lord, and you would find the knowledge of God. For the Lord gives wisdom, and from his mouth come knowledge and understanding. Heavenly Father, indeed, we gather, seeking you, desiring your presence to lead, to guide, and to inspire. Truly, our hearts desire is to serve you, serve you well. Come before you in thy precious and holy name. Amen.
Amen. Yes, sir.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Stan. And thank you for yesterday too. Thank you. We're gonna go into the budget hearing first, and I'm gonna turn it over to the town manager, Joe Labello.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. But by Florida statute, I have to make this announcement first. Can we have the PowerPoint? Thank you. The announcement states as followed, the town of Lake Clark Shores setting and fixing a tentative millage rate to be levied at five point nine zero 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 mils, which is four point nine three percent over the rollback rate of five point six two two eight. So that is a requirement. So I'll go into the presentation. Little bit about our calendar. As you know, we started this venture in May, where we gathering information to start budget process. And in July, council and staff worked diligently on getting a proposed millage rate and a proposed budget together. And at that time, we thought conservatively, let's let's approve the last year's rate, which was five point nine nine zero. So we're gonna talk about what the rate is now, but we already made an announcement. It's gonna be lower. So that's good news. But the calendar continues, which is today, which is the first public hearing, which was advertised on your trim notices that you got in August. And and the second and final meeting will be on the fifteenth, which is a Monday. So it's not any normal Tuesday meetings. These are they cannot conflict with the county or the school board. So the next meeting is on the fifteenth, and that'll be the final budget hearing. Before we look forward, it's always good to look in the past. So let's talk about what we've done this year under the budget. This year, we had a project that was happens every twenty or thirty years. Last time we had a project this large, which is about three million dollars, was building this town hall's site. This project, the bridge, is substantially complete. As you know, the railings and the light poles are not in yet, but we were fortunate that the state approved the opening yesterday. So we have the the bridges open. It's unfortunately took eleven months, a couple of months more than we thought, but at least it's open. The next, obviously, improvements are from the CRA. We still get compliments on the community park lighting, and it's not even winter time. So we think when daylight saving comes, this is really gonna be useful that the for safety. And we have six new light poles there, which when I go there at night, it does make a big difference. So I'm very happy with that project. And as you remember, we went out to bid, and we had to actually get other bids, because we got they were so high when we went out for formal bidding. We're doing a great job, I think. Staff's doing a great job and council on picking color and herring on their master plan for the Forest Hill Parks. Won't spend a lot of time on that, because that's gonna be discussed later on this evening. This is a project that was done in October of last year. I love it. It's a it's the boat ramp improvements. Still get compliments on that. There's been a lot of parking, less parking on the street because of more trailers and boats, and vehicles can fit on the ramp. It's much cleaner. I think it came out really good, and residents like it. As you know, we have a building on our south property and our utilities area. We are gutting the whole building. We're putting new we put a new roof and impact windows and doors, insulation, painting, lighting, and we're finishing up the project with fencing. And we're gonna invite you all out there to have another groundbreaking, because a lot of work's been out there, and it's it's a long-awaited project. All right. Our biggest project for the whole year is not even the bridge. It's this next project. But we didn't pay for it, which is the best part of it. We signed an agreement with the developers of Mar-a-Lago. Okay, they're developing a whole new water system for their six hundred customers, which will be our customers, our water, our new water customers. And it's about eleven to twelve million dollars of infrastructure we're getting in free. So major accomplishment for this town, which we have two thousand or so customers, water customers, we're adding six hundred more. So it's a it's a big increase for the town. Lawrence Road, we had water pipes that had to be replaced in two phases. Very expensive project, a couple million dollars. That's been completed. On police and administration, we got new police radios. Thank you, council. I'm sure the police are still happy with those new radios. So that went well. We implemented two new ordinances for public safety, and we we were actually successful in closing out a couple violations that were decades old. So we're still working on that one on Hagan Road, but it's going in the right direction. All right, the budget actual size is about four point nine million on the general fund side. It's about the same amount on the utility side. The utility side will actually be larger than our general fund budget, as we mentioned last time. And the increase of eight percent, even though we have a four percent increase in the millage rate, is mainly due to more projects that are being done and funded by the the FRS, I mean, the CRA, the CRA, FR, the FR.
Wish.
I wish. I wish. The CRA and other utilities and the utility department. So we are in a balanced budget. We even have a little bit extra, really close, five thousand dollars, but we're we're balanced. But the council and staff worked very diligently and very hard about getting the millage rate down. As you can see, we started this venture back in two thousand twenty-three, because the millage rate was flat for many years, and I believe it was more than a decade, where it was that rate of six point two seven, whatever that number is, and I can't read. But now, we're we've reduced it three times in a row, and three years in a row, and we're down to five point nine, which is now four point nine three percent over the rollback rate. The old rate, which you approved in July, was seven percent over the rollback rate. So we took about a couple percent off of that proposed millage rate. This is a new chart. It's a it's a nice chart to look at where your money goes out of your total tax bill. And again, this will change, because it's on proposed millage rates. But twenty-six point six two percent goes to the town, fifteen point six percent goes to fire rescue. Are your biggest portion of your taxes go to the school board at twenty-eight point five two. The county gets twenty percent. All the special districts add up to six point three four, and the library system gets about two and a half percent of what you pay in your property taxes. And remember, what I didn't mention here, even though that says four point nine three percent over the rollback rate, if you are homesteaded, your taxes are only going up two point nine percent, because it can only go up what the adjusted cost of living is every year. So it's capped at three percent or less. So looking at this budget on a macro level, we're asking for no staff, as you all know, council. We're asking for a four percent average merit increase, which includes cost of living, no benefit changes. We're still working on two outstanding items of operating. We're negotiating with waste management for a new contract. The five-year contract will expire at the end of this month. Charlie, they said they will give us a six-month extension if I don't complete it by which we won't by next meeting. But we're still, both sides are negotiating hard to get a good contract for both the contractor and the town. As normal, it's hard to get property and liability insurance quotes out. But we're working on getting something approved by the next council meeting on the fifteenth. We hope we can get that done. We didn't. We did put an extra ten percent in the budget for that. Now, on the capital items, we have good news. The first one is the paving project. We said, we told council already knows this, but we we told the council at their last meeting, we didn't think we can pave from Mediterranean going north to the causeway. And we got good news. We did find one vendor that has agreed in writing that they will pay for two hundred thousand dollars and and stripe and change all the humps to tables from Mediterranean all the way to the causeway. So good news. We told them to schedule us. But as you all know, with paving contracts, even though you even you sign a contract, it takes months for them to actually get to the work. So we hope to get it in the fourth quarter, but we don't know when the the work will be done. But we'll we'll definitely keep you updated. We changed the the park, not the number, because it was community park improvements. We just changed it to park improvements for the CRA. At the end of the tomorrow's meeting, the end of this meeting tomorrow, I've got a meeting with a grant consultant. Richard and I have been talking to about hiring a firm that I've dealt with in the past that just focuses on grants for parks. This firm's been very successful. I've worked with them in the past. So I need direction from council of what we should go for first. But I'd like to talk to the consultant first to say, this is what we got. We got the Forest Hill Boulevard Parks. We've got community park improvements that need to be done. Where can we get money? So so after that meeting, I'll definitely update you all. We have a fleet of our patrol cars that are mainly two thousand twenty cars, and they're getting to be six years old. So we're gonna start replacing them in the next few years. So we're starting with two this this next year. We got one public works truck at forty thousand, and the one outstanding item that's not in the budget that the council and we keep talking about about is changing to our retirement system for our employees. Not gonna go into depth on this, because I went over this a couple of months ago, and nothing has really changed that much. The economy looks good. We've got near-record-high stock market. Inflation is is actually subdued somewhat, and tariffs, the threat of tariffs and that, and wars are still horrible. But the the global economy is still not much changed with what it was two months ago. Locally, on Palm Beach County, we're still doing well. Property values are holding up. But what I like to talk about local impacts, what what what's really impacting the town. As I said, we had a project that we do every twenty to thirty years. That is gonna put some pressure on our our reserves. That's not uncommon to have pressure on your reserves on a project this large, and one that happens every twenty years. That's what reserves are for. And also, one of our biggest change orders, as you all know, I've been keeping you all up informed, has gone from three hundred sixty thousand for those rocks and unforeseen circumstances to about a hundred and thirty thousand. So good news on the change order front. But we have some other change orders we're still negotiating. Hopefully, we'll bring them all to you on the fifteenth. If not, it'll bleed into October. We're we're worried, and we're monitoring what the state's doing. Thank you, Representative Tendricks, for always inviting me to meetings and recommending me for committee. Stop that. But it's it's a little scary. Some things are not as scary as others. But, you know, when they're talking about getting rid of taxes for all homesteaded properties, or getting taxes, having no no taxes for seniors, or or getting rid of probably taxes totally is is totally, I don't even, this happens every twenty years. I went through this twenty years ago with the state legislature, and hopefully, it'll be subdued as it was twenty years ago. But there's some things that they can do, which is reduce the impact for new new homeowners that are moving in, first-time homeowners, new owners that are coming in from other states that are, you know, the tax bill was three thousand, now it's eight thousand. So, you know, we're talking about things like that, and those make sense. So hopefully, we'll get a little sensible sense in the state level. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the League of Cities has made out a really good video on this, and I'll be sharing it, obviously, with you all shortly. But I'll send it. Let's just, Emily, let's just forward it out to everybody in the council so they see it. It's it's only a couple of minutes. They did a really good job with it. And it was at the conference. I'm sure you saw it.
Yes.
All right. So that that basically ends on a good note, which is, we're gonna have no new no debt for a general fund, starting next year. The end of next year, our debt will be totally paid for. So our financial position keeps getting stronger and stronger. So if we have a recession or anything that we can't foresee, we're we're gonna try to weather the storm, even if it's a storm with a hurricane and debris, or a financial storm. So that is it. I want to thank everybody for help. Thank you for counsel. I mean, you guys been on the phone or meeting with me on hours on this, and I really appreciate all your input. But the good news is, for the third consecutive year, we're gonna lower the millage rate. So if you have any questions, but first, you have to take audience questions.
Yes, sir. Do we have any? Did you want to speak on the?
Tim Daughtry, fourteen-ten Keller Road. So I continue to look at the budgets every year. And I look at them, and I look at them, and I look at them, and they go up. And even with rollbacks, my taxes go up. Now I'm homesteaded. Okay, so it's limited, and it's not that much. But there are people in this town that are not homesteaded, and it does affect them quite a bit more than I do, than affects me. We're a town of fifteen hundred homes, thirty-five hundred residents. That's the size of a good-sized homeowners' association. And for our size, I think we spent entirely too much. Okay. And I've said it year in and year out. We're staring at property tax changes, and Representative Tendrich will tell you they're gonna fight it. But the fact is, we're going to have property tax changes, and we're gonna have significant property tax changes. Also, Doge is coming into all the different counties, and we'll be going to all the different municipalities to see where we are spending our money. Okay. And they are gonna be focused on where our spend expenditures might not be appropriate for a town of this size. One thing that I always point out is, we don't need to spend the money on vehicles that we spend on. Seeing the amount of Tahos and a Suburban that we that we lease, I think is entirely inappropriate for a town of this size, bless you. It's the one thing that people bring up to me all the time. We need to concentrate on basic infrastructure and providing for our citizens that or the needs of keeping our infrastructure up to date. Obviously, we spent a lot of money on the bridge, but the roads, the roads, the roads. Okay. And Joe mentioned that they're gonna pave the road all the way up and down on Pine Tree, which I think is well, well, well past due, considering it's been untouched the entire time I've lived in this community, twenty-one years. And it is crumbling in a lot of places, and it's dangerous in a lot of places. So I think that's good, but we got to get to the side roads. I've sat here through twenty-one years, and I've never seen us jet or camera our storm sewers, never, ever. That's a basic infrastructure issue that needs to be taken care of on a regular basis. It's the only way you can tell what's going on under the ground. Okay, it's that simple. And I brought this up with our previous town administrator, and the answer was, well, we'll deal with them when our storm sewer fails. That's not my idea of being proactive. I think being proactive means being ahead of the game. But when it comes down to it, the majority of our budget is salaries, is salaries. And we've got to work on a way that we address that issue. So I'm gonna say this, and I know it's not a popular notion. Two things I'm gonna mention right now. For our higher-salaried employees in each of our departments, I think we should impose a freeze on their salaries at the present rate. Also, I think we need to look at reductions in each department we have. Again, this is because we're gonna have to address audit items that are gonna come out of this town, and we're gonna have to address items that are result in some sort of property tax changes. Joe thinks maybe that will go away. That may indeed be true. But I don't know. The fact is, there's a lot of push to eliminating taxes, and maybe even eliminating all of our property taxes, which, for all intents and purposes, makes this town of Lake Clark Shores a nonentity, because there's no way for us to fund our town. Okay, we need to be proactive and reactive, and that means making cuts. And that means me making hard cuts in every department. And I know that's not popular. I know that's not popular. I get it. But the fact is, we need to recognize this is something we're gonna have to deal with, and we're gonna have to deal with it sooner rather than later. Now, the bridge is almost done. Okay. And I was concerned with letting of that contract when we only had two bids for the bridge. And I know from building a bridge of similar size within the last three years up in Vermont, of course, two different areas, two different pricing structures and everything else. I considered it to be overpriced. I did. We need to ensure that when we're spending money up above a certain amount, that we get at least five bids, which will leave us with at least three viable bids. Because Joe will tell you this just as well as I will. You get a number of bids, there's always one or two that are not particularly viable bids. And we need to make sure that for every item of substance, we're getting enough bids to make sure we're getting the best price. And the best price is not necessarily the lowest price. Okay, best price is the best price based on any number of reasons under the sun. Okay, lowest price, a lot of times, is not the best price. But by getting five bids and having three viable bids, who I at least have three bids that we can work with to try and determine if that's the right bid for us. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you want to comment on Doge or the stormwater?
We do. We do camera the storm work, and we we do flush them out.
And didn't and do we didn't Doge recently come to Palm Beach County, or is that still in the works?
No, they they had a visit to Palm Beach County, not to any cities, only Gainesville that I know of. But they we sent them. We've had multiple communications, and all been successful.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? Any emailed or online?
Oh, actually, yes.
Okay.
Let's see here. There's Michael Horwitz. You can go ahead and unmute yourself, Michael.
Hi, thanks for taking my questions. Um, the the idea of replacing the speed humps with speed or speed bumps with speed tables, is there someplace where we can see an example of what those new tables will look like? Because it's the kind of thing that we should see what it is before we have them put in. That's one question. But maybe more important, the talk about removing some stop signs got a lot of people like myself thinking about using speed humps or bumps as speed control devices instead of the stop signs. And we might want to put, if we're reshuffling where the if we have this opportunity to not put them back right where they happen to be today, but let's think about where we'd like them to be if we did remove stop signs on Pine Tree, because we might want them in very different places to achieve the speed control that these humps or tables can do that stop signs are really bad for. So before we do contract to put them back right where they are today, we should study where we'd really like to have them to put them back in the in where our future will be, not our past.
Absolutely. Do you want to comment on the speed tables?
Of course. We did have a study back in twenty, January of twenty-four. And please, we can tell you the video on that, and the the traffic engineer did recommend to keeping our speed humps as is, but putting changing them to speed humps, speed tables when available, when you do upgrades to the the roadways. So that's what we're doing. We're changing it from the humps in the same location where possible, because tables take up more space. And when you have a lot of circular drives, sometimes that you actually, they don't fit a table. So.
And do we have any diagrams, or can we put that on the website of what it would look like?
Yeah, we're gonna. We're gonna put this all on. We're doing a full campaign. It's all gonna be on the website. Yes.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other comments?
No.
Okay. Any other town council comments? Anybody want to comment?
Would it be appropriate to discuss an item on the CRA budget now or during the CRA meeting?
CRA.
Give me come, any Taylor?
I just want to commend Joe and town staff for their their work on the budget and the presentation and being able to roll back the millage rate.
Thank you. And John?
Yeah, Joe and I spent a solid, good hour today discussing the budget. But I will say, I am actually actually really proud, the fact that I've served the the time on this council that I've been here. The millage rate has gone down every single year. And so for me, that's encouraging. And, you know, my job in my real world is I'm a financial guy. And as a fiduciary, making sure we're doing the right thing with folks' money is extremely important to me. And Joe and I, we we agree, disagree, move some stuff around, figure some stuff out. But at the end of the day, that team's working extremely hard to make sure they're being responsible. And and I, as a fiduciary, are checking that responsibility, and there's some checks and balances there. And so, Joe, kudos to you and your team for the hard work you guys are doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
By the way, John, I got you beat. I kept him on the phone for an hour and thirty-seven minutes today, going over the budget.
This is not a competition, please.
Thank you, John. And at this point, I think I believe it's turn over to the town attorney, Charlie.
Florida law requires the full reading of the resolution. Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash fifteen, a resolution of the town council of the town of Lake Clark Shores, Florida, adopting a tentative millage rate of five point nine zero 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 mils for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five dash twenty twenty-six. Whereas during the July eight twenty twenty-five town council meeting, the town council of the town of Lake Clark Shores discussed the proposed budget and proposed millage rate for fiscal year twenty twenty-five slash twenty twenty-six. And whereas during this meeting, the town And whereas during this meeting, the town council of the town of Lake Clark Shores approved a proposed millage rate of 5.9950. Set the date for the first budget hearing to be on Wednesday, September 3, 2025. And the date for the final budget hearing to be on Monday, September 15, 2025. And whereas the public notice of the town council's intention to adopt the final millage rate will be published in the Palm Beach Post on September 11, 2025. Now therefore be it resolved by the town council of the town of Lake Clark Shores, Florida as follows. Section one, that the tentative tax rate hereby levied for fiscal year 2025 slash 2026 shall be at the millage rate of 5.9000 mills upon the non-exempt valuation of real and tangible personal property lying and being situated in, within the boundaries of the town of Lake Clark Shores, Florida. Section two, the tentative 2025 slash 2026 millage rate of 5.9000 mills is 4.93% greater than the rollback rate of 5.6228 mills. And if approved by the council, passed and adopted this third day of September, 2025.
Okay, do we want to entertain a motion?
So move to approve resolution 2025-15 to adopt the tentative millage rate for the 2025-26 fiscal year.
You have a second?
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Back to Charlie.
Yeah, I got to read the next one. Okay, the next one we only read by title. This is resolution number 25-16, a resolution of the town council of the town of Lake Clark Shores, Florida, adopting a tentative budget for fiscal year 2025 slash 2026.
So move to adopt the tentative budget for the 2025, oh, I'm sorry, the resolution for 2025-16 to adopt the tentative budget for the 2025-26 fiscal year.
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved. I think, uh, I think that can, I think that concludes the budget hearing for September 3, 2025. And now we'll move on to the CRA. And are you ready?
Chair Bridget Keating.
Present.
Vice Chair Kristy Mossbach.
Here.
Commissioner Taylor Materio.
Here.
Commissioner Gregory Freebold. Commissioner John Maples.
Here.
Okay, do we have any audience comments? Do you want to comment anything on the CRA, Tim?
I have something that goes to the park, but I was going to wait until the general meeting, but probably it would be appropriate some of that to forward David's presentation to my colleagues and some of that.
They're going to be coming up shortly. Okay.
Tim Dottry, 1410 Keller Road. So, I was going to bring this up in the general meeting, but the holiday season will be coming upon us soon. And the tree that we use presently right now needs to be looked at, okay, because we had significant problems with it last year. It was not on GFI protected outlets for a significant portion of time to make sure it was lit, which is not right and not safe, okay? Fact is, LED lights, holiday lights, exterior, they just don't work, okay? I mean, anybody does holiday lighting for a living replaces the lights on a year by year basis, okay? That's the only way to make it work. And we have a problem with, with that tree and we need to look at it sooner rather than later to make sure that it looks appropriately during our holiday season. And specifically talking about the park and the location there. The fact is, this tree lighting, this tree memorializes the Tackett family, okay? And we do have a rock that memorializes them in the old location. And I would love to see that rock relocated to the new location so people can see it and view it there. And I would love if it was lit up during the holiday season so people know who this was and who he was. And what, I mean, Jim led us having a tree every year and having it lit every year. And it, it's important to me personally, but I think it's important to memorialize longtime residents of this town that gave back to this town so much. And we can't let that go by the wayside. And talking about memorialize, where is Malcolm Lewis's name on something of substance in this town? Okay.
Is, is there a plaque that's missing or is this something we've never done?
I don't think we've done anything.
Okay.
Okay. The man was here from the time this town was made.
Established.
And was on this council for quite a few years, not just quite a few years, for eons and eons and eons. And I think someplace up at that park needs to be something about Malcolm, I really do. I, and, and you know what? I sat here in these meetings, year after year after year, and my eyes rolled too, just like everybody else's sometimes. He could be long-winded, but I must say, his heart was there for all of our residents. And I think it's a slap in the face to his family that his name isn't on anything of substance in this town. Okay, I mean, it's a shame, it really is. I think it's an insult to his family. I mean, he gave years and years and years of his life to this town, okay? And there needs to be something up there about him, okay? Okay, we're talking about the parks and everything else, but those are the two things about the parks that, you know, I really think about when I think about the park and it's the tree. And then the fact that Malcolm's name is some, needs to be somewhere up there in a place of prominence.
I, I totally agree with, uh, preserving the history and I believe the, the parks people are doing it. So I don't know, that will have to be something that
We'll continue talking.
Will definitely look into, but I, I think the tree is something that we need to definitely check on before, you know, like you said, let's be preventative and let's be proactive and not reactive. Okay.
We did purchase new internal guts for the new tree.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question about the tree?
Yeah.
I, I, I think the, the decision was made to, to, to move the tree from Memorial Park to this park, is that right?
No, the tree's still going to be there.
Still at, at, at the head of the lake?
Yeah.
Oh, perfect, okay, thank you.
Yeah, we, we just.
Because of the bridge closure.
We, we moved the event.
Right.
But, but we're going to discuss where to put the event because that's not been decided by you all.
So the tree lighting event is not going to be where the tree is?
Well, you guys haven't decided where to put the, we're going to discuss that, where, where to actually have the venue. But the tree will still be there. We think the tree looks perfect there.
It does.
Yeah.
I, I concur.
Yeah. And we, and we did, thanks for Tim's comments, uh, because we did purchase some internal guts uh, for the, that tree, so we, we're changing out the internal mechanisms to that tree.
And he mentioned the GFI, is that the outlets or is that actually the tree itself?
No, it's the outlets, but, um, we'll look into that too. We'll see how that is, but they know, they do know about that problem.
Uh, do we have any other comments from the audience?
Yeah, Joe, let me just follow up on one thing. When I first got on the council, maybe it was two and a half years ago, this, um, recognition piece came up for Malcolm. And at the time it was, hey, we're going to figure it out. So can we, can we put something together, maybe some ideas from the town that maybe we should do and bring that back to this council so that we can make sure um, he's recognized in some capacity, because I do remember this conversation before, this isn't the first time. And so, um, to honor Malcolm and the work that he put in and, and the time that he sacrificed for his family, because it is a sacrifice. Um, I want to make sure we do something to honor him and at least have this council, give this council an opportunity to hear some recommendations or um, something of that nature. So if the town could be so kind as to put some ideas together and present that to this council, that would be incredible.
And didn't you mention Tim Haggard for the tree itself? Jim? Tag it.
If they have them.
They have them, yeah.
And.
Which is where it will be now.
Understood. I, and it's the, it's not serving its purpose, so I, I agree with you. Do we have any, uh, written comments?
No.
Or emailed?
No.
Do you want to consider a motion to approve the agenda?
I so move.
One second.
Oh, before we approve that, I'd like to, uh, approve the agenda, make a motion to approve the agenda, but removing, um, from the consent. Oh, I'm sorry, we're not there, we're on the internet.
We'll get there.
Yeah, I apologize.
No worries. Uh, do we have a?
My second.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So approved. Okay. Provable the minutes.
Yeah, now we can, uh, we're on consent, right?
Now we're on the consent.
So I'll make a, I'll move to make a motion to approve the consent, but removing item four.
Not, this is the CRA.
The CRA.
We're in the CRA.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh mercy, I'm on the wrong page. Yeah. Long day, I promise.
So do we have a, a motion to approve the consent agenda for the CRA?
You first.
I, I will make a motion.
I will second. I will second that.
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So approved. I think this is, uh, now you guys are up, Colter and Herring. I'm excited to hear this presentation. I've seen it and I.
Good evening, we're excited too.
Good evening.
Good evening, uh, uh, Nicole Plunkett with Cotler and Hearing, and I also have Megan Michelson here with Cotler and Hearing as well. And it's crazy because I was going back through all of our records, meeting minutes over the past number of times we've been here. And would you believe that exactly a year ago in September was when we first met all of you?
Wow.
To kind of kick off this project, not to kick it off, but just to talk about our firm and, and it's pretty crazy, a year goes by very fast, so. Um, I just wanted to recognize that we're really proud of how much has been accomplished in this past year. And, um, just wanted to highlight a couple of things. I'm going to have Megan come up and talk about the fun part with the, the parks project, but I just wanted to say a couple of words. So we've attended, uh, the town's barbecue for the first time. We got to drive on the golf carts with your amazing staff through the parks. And we got to really first, hear firsthand from your staff as well, and I just wanted to give a big thank you to, I don't know.
There.
Oh, there's Emily.
They're all over the place.
They've just been absolutely wonderful in this process and a big part of the success of this is, is working with staff and consultants. So I just wanted to thank, thank you both for that and the rest of the staff that we had a chance to, to meet during this process as well. So we did the first digital survey and then we did a second one, which was branded through the year Parks Year Vision. And that really leveled up the community engagement, which was something that was really important, uh, when we first met with you a year ago. And, um, I wanted to thank Mayor Keating for sending over some really great inspirational photos. There were some really cool paving details, art ideas, and then of course, historical signage, uh, marker signage, which uh, we took into account and took into consideration, uh, during the master parks plan. And tonight, we're really happy to present the Parks Master Plan Guidelines for Memorial Park, Pine Tree Park and North Park. And again, this is a document to guide the future. It gives you with ideas and inspiration, but also the flexibility to, uh, continue to adapt to the future needs of the town of Lake Clark Shores. And so with that, I'm going to bring Megan up and, um, I wonder if we can pull up, uh, the Parks Master Plan. Of course, the document that we provided to you, uh, has a lot of detail to it and we weren't going to flip through every single page tonight. But what we were going to do was, uh, walk you through the Parks Master Plan and, uh, just a high level of the document. And happy to answer any questions or, or provide any additional information as, as we're here tonight, so we're all yours.
Thank you, thank you for taking the input.
Hi, it's good to see you all again.
Good evening, welcome.
Um, so as Nicole said, uh, this is a discussion on, uh, how the planning and the overall vision came to life for Pine Tree Memorial and North Park. So just to recap, the first portion, there's, there was a full comprehensive booklet, uh, design guidelines and master plan booklet that went out. And the first portion of the booklet was subsequent information that basically covered everything that Nicole just went over on the Your Parks, Your Vision, uh, initiative and the two surveys and the work that we did with Lake Clark Shores and the residents who are very instrumental in giving us feedback so we can move forward and put this plan together. So, um, this is, does Emily have the, can we flip through the booklet? This is a large, yeah, could we do that? I think it's, it will be page eight that the, the master plan is on. Seven, eight, perfect, hey, and that went down. Okay, so this is the overall park plan, uh, lacking of, uh, labels, but just the overall vision of where Memorial, Pine Tree and North Park all relate to each other. And if we go to the next page, Emily, on page nine.
Do you slow to respond?
Yeah. Perfect. So then we start getting into more, uh, snapshot features of each of the parks. So Memorial Park, looking at this, uh, again, a lot of residents in the community surveys reported that they wanted, uh, the overwhelming majority supported community gathering spaces, passive recreation, i.e. walking trails, shaded gardens, uh, and shaded seating. And also an additional landscape for aesthetics, noise buffering from the adjacent, uh, Large Forest Hill Boulevard and for simple environmental benefits. And if we scroll to the next one, Emily, please, thank you so much. We start getting, uh, deeper into each of those features. So starting with, uh, the left half of Memorial Park, again, intended to remain passive and reflect those green spaces that honor, one, the existing memorial features that majority of residents wanted to retain. Uh, and finding opportunities in landscape areas to welcome residents and visitors to come sit and enjoy the parks. I spent, uh, a lot of my time coming on site visits and spending time in the parks myself. Uh, while I was out, uh, one day with Joe riding on the golf cart. Um, we came across the summer fishing camp.
Came across what?
The summer.
Fishing camp.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, and I saw, uh, kids of younger ages, I believed it was elementary, uh, were out for the day enjoying the park system, uh, having camp and, uh, sitting under what was a, a pop-up pavilion, like a rented tent. Um, and I thought having similar to what we have here right outside the hall, a permanent, uh, structure for gathering events, whether it be camps or just passive seating spaces, um, along the waterfront and having that movement and space would be really beneficial to the park system. And over on the right side of the page are simple, uh, broad inspiration images to show what those different features may look like. So, uh, I grabbed images from other park systems that work well. Uh, may it be the pavilion and gathering areas, those shading seedings and what we mean for Brick Plaza, which is meant to be fluid passive space, um, and creating a exterior border to the larger open lawn area, which will be on the next page if you want, Emily. Thank you. So, um, the open lawn space to double down on some of the concerns that were just brought up. We wanted to retain that money shot look out onto the beautiful Lake Clark. So we didn't want anything to hinder the view, uh, out to where you have the Christmas tree lighting um, and creating a space that is more prominent-esque, uh, and having that, uh, fluid space along the shoreline. There is a existing berm, uh, right behind the current fountain that is in Memorial Park. There is a existing berm right behind the current fountain that is in Memorial Park. It's smaller in scale. So this suggests expanding that berm and creating more of like a dome-like amphitheater style, may it be for discovery or when we have events like the Christmas tree lighting. There's more of that down open cascading look onto the open lawn and out to beautiful Lake Clark and Christmas tree lighting and things as such. And this again, we'll just reiterate that welcoming and right when you come off I-95 and you're coming into Lake Clark Shores, this is what you see on the side of the road. You're coming in and we need to identify that it's a welcoming threshold into Lake Clark Shores and that those elements can strengthen a sense of place and significance when you're coming in. So that will be retaining the existing features at the Memorial Plaza and updating signage as well as a new entry plaza and gateway signage up there that we can also use to repurpose the existing placards and those memorial stones and rocks that are existing in the park to be highlighted and placed in the new landscape and new hardscape design. And then again, these are just inspiration images that we, we pulled to illustrate the idea of that. Next page if you could. Awesome. Thank you. So this is now sliding over into the overall plan for Pine Tree Park. The idea for this park was to create a bit more of activation. Currently as the park stands, it is, it only has a heart trail and some much needed TLC on the existing gym equipment. So again, we wanted to reemphasize that you're coming into, starting in the top left corner, you're coming into a new elevated park system. And this also includes pedestrian crossing improvement across the major traffic junction at Forest Hill Boulevard and Pine Tree Park. Thank you, Emily. So zooming in on that, we can see that we are proposing additional parallel parking. I know we just got an awesome revamp to the bridge on Pine Tree. So including additional spaces that could be flexible for ADA or just additional spaces during the week for visitors who need the parking space. It can also be a flex space for when there are events. We could hold food vendors or food trucks. And this will be next to a proposed new adjacent Brick Plaza. That also includes seating and space to hold events as such. And next to it there, we have a children's discovery area. So this is meant to be not like your traditional playground or a hard physical structure, but rather a space that is safe and natural and meant for kids to come into the park system.
Can you elaborate on, I don't understand what a discovery area is.
Sure. So traditional playgrounds include climbing walls, swings, a slide. But this is rather equipment that is meant to look like it belongs in a natural space. So examples here in these inspo images include play equipment that is shaped as rocks or logs or things that are meant to be climbed on and explored. Same as landscaping or different movement in the landscape rather than something that's meant to go down like a slide or a monkey bar. And then to preserve the character and to keep focusing on that passive recreation, we want to move along the bottom half of the lakeside and opening that up again to a promenade to encompass the whole interior of that new open lawn space for a amphitheater. The amphitheater is meant to be also a flex space. I threw in some example images here that are from precedent studies of other parks. Some close here in closer cities that are adjacent to us that have structures subject to change or open to interpretation from council. If these are a permanent structure or if this is something that might be taken up, put down only there for when events are happening in the park system. If we go to the next one, Emily, please. Awesome. And then shifting over to the right side of Pine Tree Park, I included the location of the future pump house that is supposed to be put in from the Water Management District. And this, the property line that you can see, the white and black dash line that runs through the middle of this plan snapshot shows where our park system ends and the adjacent property from the Water Management District next door. The additional heart trail, talking to Joe, we were, you know, bouncing around ideas, what we can do with this extra space. And I think retaining the idea of that heart trail that a lot of people do like that exists in Pine Tree Park now could be reused in the same concept and idea can be implemented with additional approval from the Water Management District. And we also discussed a gym circuit. A majority of respondents wanted to see some type of exercise equipment in the park system. And this is something that we discussed through the National Fitness Campaign, having a full gym circuit and workout area and adjacent to it, a public art wall and open space for activities such as yoga or group fitness. And then also on the north side, there is an existing berm that is great for noise buffering from Forest Hill Boulevard. Again, retaining that and and doubling down on the landscape buffer. Awesome thing, Emily. And for last but not least, our North Park. Again, North Park remaining passive in nature, coming in, seeing that main entry signage right when you get off I-95, welcoming you to Lake Clark Shores. And this park is meant to be open, more geared towards the kids. I know we do have the discovery area in Pine Tree Park, but having a walkthrough area of art and public places, chalk and art walk and shaded seating. Next slide if you could, Emily. And again, here are just inspiration images to illustrate those ideas. Again, very high level inspiration, but envisioning what that space could look like. And then the latter half of this book are drawings from perspective images that I grabbed while I was out on site. And I just hand drew over them, watercolored them and showed that what envisioning in the future outlook of these inspirational places could look like.
These are your renderings?
Yes.
They're wonderful. Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I had a lot of fun doing them. So. And again, the corresponding numbers relate to what that could look like. So for example, this spot particularly would be in Pine Tree Park where we're talking about that nature discovery area, the plaza and the additional spaces for food trucks and vendors. So this is what maybe a typical day would look like walking through Pine Tree Park now. Along that promenade, kids are playing in the natural play area and you can grab a bite and enjoy an event gathering. And then the pictures in the bottom right corner are the adjacent photo to what I was using to base out off of. And this is also in Pine Tree Park when you're coming in, crossing Pine Tree Boulevard where the existing crosswalk is. When you're coming in, again, you can see that the embankment, but elevating that, having the use of littoral plantings, encouraging the idea of the shorebirds and shore watching and wildlife on the lake as well as signage to understand when you're coming into the parks and having wayfinding to reinforce the identity and guide visitors through the parks. And then this is also including new landscaping, lighting ballards, getting into more meticulous design details of what that might look like in the future. But again, overall envisioning. This next one here, an idea for Memorial Park when you're coming in, this would be on the corner, looking towards the fountain at the intersection to have that landmark and entry identity coming into Memorial Park. This is just something I quickly sketched up, open to interpretation, but you know, having safety lighting, wayfinding and signage, educational, like the inspiration images that Mayor sent us and also preserving the existing canopy and having benches and seating areas. So just a collection of those ideas, throwing them together and see, seeing what that could potentially look like. Awesome. And then this was, uh, these are my, my kids that I saw when I was out fishing off the new, new docking space.
I would want to live here.
Right? Great. I love that. But again, passive in nature and having seating, open areas. You know, facelift goes a really long way and you know, having, having expanded walkways and trails and new vegetation in the park system would, would do a lot.
I love it. Do we have any council? Do we have any comments from the residents?
Tim, I have a lot of opportunities to recognize. Throughout this plan. I, I have a comment just. I'm, I'm very impressed because I think it's an exceptional task to take 460 plus opinions and put them into a plan and really nail it. And I see each of our comments represented. I don't think you could pack one more thing into these three spaces. And I'm, I'm really proud that this is where we have landed. I have little ideas or tweets, just questions about things overall, like Plan B, for example, for the heart trail. I'm not like 100% sold on the chalk.
Okay.
Situation. I'm not a big fan of chalk.
Okay.
On my side. But I think overall, it really meets the goals that the residents were, were trying to capture in their survey responses. Very excited about, about this.
Awesome. Yeah. Glad to hear that. And of course, too, drafting, we're very open to responses and hearing more back what council thinks. If there's anything that needs to be swapped out, changed or an idea that needs to be thrown in there that we missed.
Christie?
I have a great many questions.
Go for it.
Are you proposing to move the sidewalks six inches?
Not, so it's meant to be moved in six feet. So.
Six feet, excuse me.
Six feet, yes, ma'am. And just having that space to buffer more of a complete street to encourage safety going along Forest Hill Boulevard. When I was out there, I felt extremely close to the road. So it would be nice traveling, you know, through, from Pine Tree Memorial down to the, the, into the Lake Clark to have that extra space from the roadway.
This would might be, I'd like to hear everybody's opinion and yours as well. I'm sort of of two minds. I, it looks like you added a landscape buffer on Memorial Park on the left-hand side.
Yes.
And you kept the right-hand side open. I'm of two minds. I love to drive by and you know, when I'm going to the pizza parlor and look to my left and say, there's my lake. On the other hand, when I'm going to the park almost daily, I never go to Memorial Park because it is loud and I, I can sense the cars going by all the time. I go to, I go to Pine Tree Park because it's protected, it's shaded. And I'm wondering if we want to keep the view, that, you know, beautiful view, or if we want to make it more user friendly. And there's, there's, you know, pros and cons to both. Anybody have any thoughts on that?
Don?
Um. I'm open to interpretation. I don't really have a preference one way or the other. I think the view is important, but I think with the open space where you're in the park, you still have the view, as she pointed out, for the tree lighting, but from the road. Yeah, I mean, there could be some more buffer added there. I don't think that's a bad call, one way or the other.
It's just noisy. It's, I don't know.
I personally think the work that we're putting into these is to make them functioning usable parks for the people that live here. And that's where the money is, is really.
So more landscaping is what you're saying?
I, I absolutely, when I'm there with my son, have an issue with the cars and the lights shining in everyone's faces. I mean, even when we've been at events in the past, the usability will come out of the buffer and the landscaping being there, in, in my opinion. I love that view too. So I, that resonates. But I think overall, the bigger pro is to make that space as usable as possible. And also I think when we do this work, people are going to want, it's going to be like a sign that says, look at this beautiful park here. Look at what we have. We're going to be doing events with our residents. We want to make sure that this is their space that they, you know, feel comfortable and safe in.
Yeah. Couple more questions, actually a lot more questions. The plaza swings, are those swings for kids?
They're meant to be multi-generational in use. So that was also another big comment we got in feedback was that we want something and amenities in the park that can be used.
So like a porch swing or, or kid swings?
Um, there are a few precedent studies from a different, a few different parks. And the swings are meant to be sat in almost like a armchair and they're hooked up to a.
Okay.
Yeah. Arm.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. That sounds, I like that idea.
With a back that you can't go.
Describe the play area at the Palm Beach Zoo as a discovery area. Is that a good?
I have not been to the zoo. So I can't speak on that, but.
Well, the, because the swings are in Memorial Park and the play area is in Pine Tree Park.
I was just kidding. I, I thought maybe you had seen that play area at the zoo because it's more of a discovery area. There's no traditional slides or swings or anything like that from your previous question.
Okay. How big is the pavilion that you're proposing?
The pavilion is about, the pavilion that is out here, we measured with Joe one afternoon and it's roughly 30 by 60. So in comparison, if you want to compare this one out here, it would be about half the size.
I'm sorry. Is it 30 by, I'm confused. Is it 30 by 60?
It would, it would be roughly 15 by 25, 30.
Oh, that one's 30 by 60. Okay, I got it.
Yes.
Okay. And you've got some shaded seating on here?
Yes.
Is that, that's got an artificial shade over it?
Yes. So they can, the, there'll be traditional park benches and they'll have a cantilever top over them for that more modern look that majority of residents voted for.
Okay. Are you proposing to add any shade trees to Memorial Park?
Yes. So any of the trees that are on the plan that have a X in them, those are existing canopy trees within the park system. And then I went in and added on top of the berm and around the exterior perimeter and the buffer areas.
Yeah.
Added shade trees. Yes.
Okay. I, I like the fact that you, you've created an entry that has a sense of place. I'm not sure. I love the one in the rendering, but it really adds a, adds a nice sense of place. And I can see why you wanted the same diagonal entry into Pine Tree Park, but I think that just lets in more noise from Forest Hill, in my opinion. And the, what I love about that park is how it's so removed from Forest Hill, even though it's on Forest Hill. Just a thought that I'm putting out there. How big is the pavilion that you're proposing for Pine Tree Park?
The pavilion there, roughly the same size as the one that is in Memorial. So.
Okay.
I, I can't say off the top of my head, the size of the slab that the gym circuit is on. It would be roughly the same in length.
And yeah, I was gonna actually, how big is the gym's circuit slab?
I think when we put it on the plan, it was 60 by 40.
Well, that's pretty big.
It is. It's a, it's a fairly big gym circuit.
And it's, and, and it's totally open to the sun. It has no shade. I fear it won't get much use if it has no shade of any sort.
Correct. I agree. On the plan visually, just now we put palm trees, any trees that don't have a whole lot of droppings. So when you are using the gym circuit, you're not getting ambushed by leaves or seeds, but there are, you know, vegetation we can put or canopy around the gym circuit. Definitely.
And the, the item to the left of the group fitness and yoga area, is that a covered area?
Yes. Yes, that, it, it is covered. I think that space, that could be flexible space without a pavilion. I think it would work just the same, just to have space for recreation, open use, group fitness, yoga. So.
So it's just basically another pavilion?
Correct.
A third pavilion, really? Okay. Oh, on the, or North Park? I love the serpentine walkway. I, I would defer to Mr. Maples over here as to, who lives on the north side. I personally, if I had a, a child or a grandchild in a stroller, would not be crossing Forest Hill to go to that small park. But do you think the residents on the north side will be using?
That was my question. And I know we talked about that, was having that crossway be a little safer, but wanting to add the golf cart kind of traction back and forth there to that deal. So I think if the golf carts could go by there safely, I think it would make it more feasible for parents to throw their kids on it and, and get across there. But and I know you didn't talk much about that, but did we function that in? Is that, you know, brick looking like thing, giving it a little bit more space for golf carts and bike? of giving it a little bit more space for golf carts and bikes and people to kind of cross together safely on that space? Is that what that was?
Yes, yes. So I talked with one of the partners at Cutler and Herring that specifically works in the DOT department. And I went back and forth with him and picked his brain to better understand what we could do to make the crossing safer across Forest Hill. He ran past a few different ideas about expanding the crosswalk, having that human space when you're going over it with a car, changing the pattern signals to you that you are now crossing into, you know, human crossing. And then also, we could add in signals, lighting, blinking and flashing lights to encourage safe crossing.
Yeah, I think if we added that, that would add a lot of value and give confidence to parents that are taking their kids across there. But yeah, I think that's, that would be very important.
Yeah, I think it would also help in when there are events and people park in adjacent parking lots on that side or over by the public park that's to the left of North Park, using those crossways and enhancing them would, would be really beneficial during events, too.
I absolutely love the idea of art in, in the parks. That's a huge plus for me. But I would, I would love to see, maybe not in North Park, I'd love to see something in either Memorial or Pine Tree. Is there a spot where you could envision some, a sculpture of some sort?
Definitely. I think in those Brick Plaza areas, I cut out spaces for landscaping and natural movement. I think there's plenty of opportunity to throw in public art.
And I guess you have no idea with the cost of this, right?
No, ma'am.
My last question is, I love your little, all your little thumbnails, you know, boxes here. Many of them sort of have a more of an Adirondack style. And I would love to see if you could put together some examples of more contemporary, or a little more a little more modern looks than, than, than the woodsy Adirondack look for the structures and the signage and, and the entries and whatever.
Yeah, we can definitely do that.
Thank you. Appreciate you fielding all my questions.
Of course.
I just want to say, sorry, that you guys, it's, you guys were the right choice, your vision over that past year with the town and all the hard work and the renderings and this hand drawing. I mean, it's just incredible. Couldn't ask for a better team to represent us and to bring this ideas. Bring it to all of us. And I'm excited because I'm I'm like, I was telling Joe today, hey, this is incredible, this first step, but we got to make this reality. Like, it would be beautiful for this vision to, for you guys to walk on this property and for it to look like all the hard work you put in. And so that's just council's job and our job to go to Tallahassee. And and get some help to make it a reality because, I mean, just incredible, incredible. So I applaud you and your team. You guys did an incredible job. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
So I, I love your, love your vision. I think with a little tweaks, I think that you said, this is all, this isn't in concrete, but it's, it's the concept and the concept to me is phenomenal. And again, reiterate it with Councilwoman Taylor said that you, you know, little fine-tune points. You captured all the comments for the residents, the things that we had feedback on, things we liked, didn't like, you toned it down. So I'm, I love it. I love the, I love the whole concept on both sides. Now, obviously, I'm one person, so whatever the council and the residents decide, anything that's even close to this vision, I'm, I'm here. Like she said, she showed that picture, I want to live here, I want to live there. I love the parks. The parks has always been my passion since I moved here and I've only been here for five years. But I love the parks. So I love what you did. Thank you for the, all the hard work and hopefully we can take this to the next step. Any other comments from the residents? Well, well, did we want to? Well, well, we discussed there's some part, right now, we've still got that area that is ours, that corner that we have available right now. We also, there's some parking in Pine Tree and then we're looking also to have some kind of something, some kind of agreement with the north side with that, that business. We haven't, none of that until we say, let's go with this. Do we do the next step and look for the options for the parking? We understand parking is going to be an issue, parking with cars, parking with golf carts. We want, we want the safe. So I'm 100%. We're not, we're not going to move this just to move it. And I think that's also going to come into the, the plan, should we decide to move forward with this. And I.
Got lots of room on the bridge for cars now.
That's, that is true. So I hope we can make this happen. Thank you.
Mayor Keating?
Yes.
There's somebody online that has, oh, no, I guess he, yes, there is somebody online.
Okay.
It's Michael Horwitz.
Okay.
You can go ahead, Michael.
Thanks for, thanks for the opportunity to speak again. We, I did speak to the council last meeting about my concerns of any large aggregation of people at that, at that area. The families with kids show up with their SUVs, lots of them, to the playgrounds that we take our grandson to, the zoos, events downtown, Wellington's Thursday night party was always, the parking lots are packed. We can't underestimate, or I can't overestimate how bad it would be if we had this beautiful welcoming entrance on Forest Hill that cars going by are going to say, hey, let's go there. They're going to pull in. It's going to be just like next month's Oktoberfest. Please go see what Lantana Road at that event is like when there's food trucks and rides and fun stuff. I think that the survey didn't give us any minimalist option. It just was, which flavor of busy do we want? So I don't think it accurately represents what a lot of people would have voted for if we had that like Pine Tree Park today is so remote and quiet and peaceful. And to give that up, even Memorial Park, when I bicycle through, I love stopping there. It's peaceful. That none of these are going to be that way. And I think when we put the dollars on it, I think I'll be second behind Mr. Daughtry saying, is this how we want to spend our money? Because it would be great for everyone driving by saying, wow, look at Lake Clark Shores, let's go party there. But is that what we want? When we want to get away, most of us, we're not in the little HOA where we have posted-sized lots where we need to go to a community place. A lot of us have playgrounds in our backyards. And we go to gyms, I'm not sure what kind of activity we're going to have here. I know, I'm not going to walk across Forest Hill to enjoy the North Park. And unlike some of our council people, we don't live close to this, where we can just walk there, where it's convenient. So it's not, by the way, I had the pleasure today of waiting at the traffic light after going over the new bridge and waiting for Forest Hill to stop. It was rush hour. That's what five o'clock, six o'clock is going to be like when we have stopped Forest Hill even longer to let the baby carriages and golf carts across. I think the state DOT is going to have an issue with it, giving more time to the crosswalk. So there's a lot of things that I hope the council takes a step back and look 30,000 feet about what this is all about. So thank you again for letting me express an opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just had one comment. We haven't decided what we're going to do. We, right now, we want this, at least, I, I get the feeling, and I don't know with the council. My feeling is, we want, we're looking at the passiveness of this park. We're not looking to the event aspect. If we do this park, and this is the, the, what it looks like with the trees and the landscaping and the enjoying the environment, and that's it, then that's it. We don't take that next step to have the events. We have the ability for you to come sit and, and sit and walk your dog, walk the, you walk your children, go through the, the children's active park. So that's my vision. Whether we take this to the next step, that's the council's decision. I like, I, I enjoy the parks. I enjoy the water. I, that's why I moved to Lake Clark Shores. I enjoy the birds. I enjoy every aspect of this community. So the parks, to me, is a passive. The events, that could, if we decide, that could be something we could decide at a later date or decide not at all, never to happen. So we have the north side. Remember, we have community over there as well. So they may never come over here and we may never go over there, but they'll have that ability to enjoy that side of the park. If they choose to come, they'll, we'll create the safe environment across Forest Hill. At least that's what I'm seeing this from here. I just, like, like the roads haven't been from for 20 years. I don't know how long it's been these parks, but you can see the neglect of these parks. And that's, to me, this community enjoys the park. We have the active ones, the pickleball courts on the north side and a children's area over there. We have our own tennis courts and children's area over here. So again, this is not about me. This is about this council. The council decides that we're going to move forward with this. I see as step one as the, a passive, more or less increase the landscape, enjoy the environment, enjoy the birds, enjoy the lake. The events, to me, are secondary, tertiary. They're, they're way down the road. So that's.
We were already doing events in the park.
Right.
This, what this plan really does is makes the event safer and more enjoyable for our residents. And if anything, does prevent the people driving by on Forest Hill from seeing what we're doing as residents with our events. But it certainly makes the parks usable for our residents. I mean.
90%.
It includes, there's maybe not the most significant amount of parking, but where we had none, there is some now. Just the overall enjoyability of the park space, even in its passive nature. We have a, a trail of fitness equipment that's rundown. No one's using. This allows for that activity be done in a very enjoyable way, in a much more beautiful space with added landscaping. So I don't think this is a, a party plan for, for Lake Clark Shores, but a way to make our events, we were already traditionally, historically hosting, just more enjoyable for the rest.
So with that said, do we have, do you want to move this forward or is there no desire to do that?
Are we voting on?
You, you can. You can approve this as adopt the master plan and then we can go to the next phase, which would be trying to look for funding. Or you can give more comments.
I would like to tweak this a little bit.
Well, I, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think this is not set in stone. This isn't concrete. This can be tweaked. This is a, to me, you, correct me if I'm wrong, because you're the designers here. Is this, this is just a general concept. There are the little tweaks that she's, now she mentioned about just a different type of entryway. That stuff can be looked to the future. That says, that's not, all this is, is is the roadmap.
Yes, this is the roadmap. However, of some of the comments that I heard tonight, we're happy to tweak or make slight adjustments and it's easy for us to make those little updates and provide a copy back to you to just approve after that. So we're happy to make these adjustments. We figured there would be some sort of feedback, considering this is the first time that you've had a chance to see it this past week. So I did write down a couple of notes and I just wanted to be sure that we had a clear direction or consensus on if we wanted to make these tweaks.
That's great.
That I can run through. So about the chalk.
So small, I know.
No, no, this is all important stuff, though, because, you know, these are, we're just down to the, the little details now.
I, I just didn't know if there was another, and I do know of my friends that live on that side, all of them have small children. I actually have a friend that just had a baby on the north side who will be using that park in the future. I just didn't know if chalk was like the most exciting opportunity for kids over there, if there's another, maybe it is just more of a walking trail. No, chalk just becomes very.
Or even a scaled down children's active, like you have on, you had, you have.
One of the discovery.
Yeah, yeah, on a smaller scale.
I definitely would like to see a child component.
Yeah.
There. Nicole, I know, I really applaud that you have the entrances mirroring each other on a diagonal to the corner there. But it does let too much of Forest Hill in, in my opinion. Does it ruin the design to move them like this or move them even off of Forest Hill back a little bit? Is there, I don't, I don't know how anybody feels, but I just want to keep Forest Hill out of the, out of the picture.
Maybe some more subtle landscaping and, and bringing it back off that corner, but still keeping a similar design. Because I think the design was, it's kind of like you're reading into the parks, just same with on the other side. I don't know if that's acceptable.
I mean, as, from a, just the design point of view, it's beautiful and it's symmetrical and it, and it flows. But from a noise and, and point of view, I think it makes the parks perhaps less usable.
I was just saying, add more, more buffering, landscaping and, and enclose it more where it's not as open as the design is.
And I think, I, I, these are all really great points. With the design of this, one of the important things that, you know, we noticed when being out in the golf cart and driving around was trying to strengthen the relationships between the parks and especially strengthening the pedestrian connections. And of course, talking with our FDOT team and understanding how we can better do that, where that component is missing right now. I think that we can perhaps address these concerns by putting a note with some additional information about the future reader who will be ultimately designing this, because again, it's, it's a guideline. And we want to propose that we want to strengthen the relationships and not necessarily cut them off from a visual standpoint, but with the same regard, making sure to be considerate of those noise and visual concerns as well. So maybe, Megan, that's, that's a note or, or something that we can add to that to provide an additional layer of information for the future designer when the funding comes through.
I think that's very appropriate.
You're not leaving us. We're going to still be involved.
Well, we would love to do the design of it. Let us know. Um, so a, a couple of other things I highlighted that I was hoping to just be sure to get clarity on. When we talked about providing additional buffering in the rest of Memorial Park and looking back at that master plan, I know that the, the one opening that we have is where the existing memorial sun, sunbeam.
Sun star.
Pavers are. And so I think we can take a look to see where other areas, I know I don't want to disturb that particular piece, but I didn't know if I, I just wanted to be sure I had clarity on what the request was on that one.
So that was your comment. So like right now?
Right.
That's open. So you would have that view.
Right. So it, it, there's, there's, it's, you know, there's pros and cons. Do we want to keep the beautiful view for, you know, when you're going on Forest Hill? Or do we want to make it more, more quiet and usable?
I think how they designed it here with sections of it landscaped and that section open kind of achieved both goals. We had discussed that view in previous meetings. So I was actually like, wow. That was genius that they opened it up and you're going to drive through and get that shiny moment.
Yeah.
I'm okay with it as it is.
I agree. I grew up in Panama City and you could go down Front Beach Road and see the water. And then obviously hotels and all this stuff. Now you can't see the water at all unless you get out of your car and go on the beach. So it's, yeah, it doesn't, it definitely doesn't feel the same. I like the idea of being able to see the water. It lets you know that there's a, there's a body of water there and that this is Lake Clark Shores. And I think being able to see it is definitely important, but that's just me. You girls will know better than me for sure.
On this one.
On this, sure. Yeah, staying out of it. I'm over here. I'm just in the corner.
Well, you have, you have a child, so you, you get it.
Yeah.
You get it, just because we're women.
Again, those are things that can be explored in more detail in the future.
Yes.
This is really just a, a path laid forward for us.
I think the, the last big question was the comment on the inspirational images and having the Adirondack more natural style compared to contemporary. And that's a big difference, which we can do. But I wanted to be sure that there's consensus and direction on that. Or maybe, Megan, there's a way that we can, I don't know, consolidate, I don't know. I just, I wanted to talk that through to be sure that there was an understanding on.
I personally like the, the design of the, all the entrance ways. That's, that's my personal opinion. I don't know what the rest of the council feels. I like the incorporation of the, the bird, the crane or, or logo, with our logo. And then it does subtle also, is also included on the entrance way into Memorial Park as well as you got the informational sign and the more, you know, memorializing all, everything that's been in the both parks. So now we, everybody can see it and visualize and have more history of the town and the people that dedicated their service to the, the town before us. So I like that whole concept. I think the wood, the wood, and again, this is my personal opinion, everybody else can feel differently. It's, I think it's very warm, very inviting. If the council wants something different, that's.
I'm also talking about the pavilions and all the, all the structures.
I think all the structures still are, that's, that's a variable. That's yet to be determined. We don't, that's, that, she just, my understanding is that, that the concept is one of a pavilion. What that pavilion's going to be is yet, is to be deemed.
Correct.
To be determined. So.
I'm always cautious about contemporary.
I don't mean ultra-modern. I just mean.
But that's exactly my point, is when you say contemporary, it means different things to different people. And contemporary can be dated in ten years very quickly.
Yeah, I just don't mean the woodsy, the woodsy Adirondack look, because we are in South Florida.
It doesn't read that way to me, but I mean, I don't, again, I don't know if it's like revision. I, I think at this point, we really need to focus. I I think at this point, we really need to focus on where do we, this is a plan as to where these elements would be placed and what the design is. Almost like.
What?
A a house plan, but we haven't picked like this cabinet.
The cabinets and the stone and the flooring.
When we see what we can even afford, because they might say to us, Adirondack woodsy costs $10,000, contemporary costs $100,000. This is what you guys have to work from. So I think those decisions really need to come from the budgeting aspect of this project overall. I think the renderings give residents a really great view of the future without being too specific.
So do we want them to come back with tweaks? Or do we want to have a motion for this? Plan with the tweaks to come?
I'd like to make a motion so we can move forward, but I'd like to make a motion to approve this to move us to phase two with the. Adjustments from the team to to give us a little bit more from the feedback tonight and and we move forward based on that and and go forward to phase two.
Do we have a second?
I will second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agreed.
You knocked it out of the park.
Thank you.
Glad you're working with everyone.
Thank you. Okay, on to new business.
Oh, it's the budget. Yes.
Yeah. This back on you?
Yeah, let me get to that. There's basically no real changes from the proposed budget.
Exactly. Okay. Oh, by the way, Taylor just nailed it. I'm not looking for contemporary. The word she was, the word is coastal. And you know, which is perfect for our waterfront. Nailed it, Taylor. Nailed it.
Nice, nice.
Work.
Also, too, though, just with our new lighting that we're looking at, that I think your vision of the fits what's going on here. So if that, if the coastal is something that can be tweaked into that, I I like the, I like the plan as it is. So whatever the council decides.
Just to.
Thank you.
Take care. Just to actually review what we said back in July. This budget, this proposed budget now is tentative and it it's, it includes the same $300,000 to give. The commissioners more flexibility. You guys are commissioners and chair to that at this meeting. And so you can decide on things in the future, like more park equipment, more park improvements or other improvements. So in the future, we're going to be doing this. We're going to be budgeting the the rollover that we have in reserves every year. This way, it, every year you have that opportunity if something comes up on the CRA and in the area. So it just gives you more flexibility. The two projects that are in there are, we're going to change all the light fixtures on the forest till median. And we are going to do some park improvements after our meet with the consultant to see what would. What his recommendations are, then obviously get the directions from the commissioners, which you are the commissioners.
Which which park improvements are you speaking of?
Either a community park or.
You mean these, what we just discussed?
Or the start on something here or community park, because community park needs help, but it has some useful life. So we we just, it's getting close to its end of life. On some of the playground equipment. So it gives a lot of flexibility that, so that that was our goal this year was to give flexibility. So nothing's changed.
Okay.
Yes, we need to approve it tentatively. There's a motion right here.
Yes. Do we have a motion for the CRA?
I I can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
I know we, the 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 budget has $45,000 in it for consultants. Based upon the fabulous tour that Joe gave me. Of the CRA, I think our four or 500,000 and then we spend 120 on playground equipment. We're back down to, you know. Two fifty or three hundred. It's not going to go very far at all in the commercial district. But it could go very far in the, you know, parks and and so I would be. Less inclined to want to hire a consultant for the business end of the CRA. Because I don't think that we have enough money to make a difference for the businesses. You know, the the differences that we can make for the, to entice businesses is height and density and and other decisions we can make that don't, that. You know, we don't have enough money to buy a $5 million building or whatever. So to the extent that we hire consultants like Cutler and Haring. I think it should be more focused on the recreational side and less on the business side of the CRA.
You want to elaborate on that, Joe?
Yeah, we actually were scheduled to have the consultant here and and I have that on my comments. The firm moved, the the principal of the firm moved out of the area. So I thought that was not a go for me to recommend. I I don't want to have a remote relationship with a consultant. And then I've learned some more stuff. Why, as you know, I started that quarterly meetings with the CRAs in Palm Beach County and it's going very well. We had our first meeting here. We hosted it. And we're still learning on staff versus consultant versus doing it in-house. So we were gonna, my comment there was just to postpone this for a future meeting to have more research on this. But that $45,000 is just there. Again, as you can see, most of the line items are not spent on anything. The only thing we're looking at right now is possibly hiring that grant consultant and he, he's a a flat fee of $3,500.
And that would be money very well spent.
Right. And 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 it's sometimes reimbursed by Firdapp grants anyway. So that that is the only thing that's, we're going to do that's solid besides the relationship we have with Cutler and Herring. So we're we're going to put that on the the agenda for future meetings and continue this discussion, because there's many things we've learned. But but you're right, we we think we can do a lot of the business stuff in-house. But we're we're going to bring up some important facts.
I mean, we spent so much time at the last year I meet, meeting as a commission discussing what the consultant would do. And so I think.
Right.
Presentation aspect is really important.
Yeah, that's my biggest concern is we hired Cutler and Haring, but we knew exactly what we're going to get and we saw it tonight, which was incredible. As long as we understand what the ROI is on that investment, then you, the, yes, have a real conversation, because we need that growth. If you look at our numbers on our CRA. It's like forty-two, Joe, forty. It wasn't much from year to year on the growth financially. And we need that thing to really move the needle in order to do some of this stuff in our CRA to have monies for these parks.
Hundred percent. We need.
So. Forty-two, five to forty-two, eight and year prior, twenty twenty-four went at thirty-nine to forty-two. So. The substantial growth there, but we need that growth in order to fund this this vision for the parts. So we will need some help, but we just need to know what that ROI will be on that investment. And then that'll be critical. And I think that presentation would know that.
And and as you know, we've had some movement with some of the properties being for sale. So things are, things are moving.
Yeah.
So we'll we'll bring, we're going to bring that back to you.
But we can still approve.
The budget. Yeah, yeah. Because like I said, there's nothing that's coming out of that line item for the grant.
Can I read the, if I'm going to make a motion?
Yes.
Is the resolution language where I only see.
Number seven. That's it.
That's the full resolution. So I can just use that language, correct?
Does that need to be read by Mr. Shack?
That's no, no, because, no, it's a different meeting.
So can I make a motion for approval of resolution twenty twenty-five oh one? Do I need to read the full resolution?
No.
Okay, thank you.
You have a second?
Second.
Unless you want.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, so passed. Executive Director comments.
Yes, so I was just going to go over my comment that I just made about not hiring and not bringing that consultant in.
So so done, so moved.
Okay.
So I think we're moving on. Any other comments from the council? Ah, a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
No proof. Hey, now we're, now we're back to now we're town council.
Yeah, agenda three.
Move on to town council.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Mayor Bridget Keating.
President.
Vice Mayor Kristi Masbach.
Here.
President Pro Tem Taylor Matierio.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory Freebold, Councilmember John Maples.
Here.
And we already had their silence and invocation and pledge of allegiance and our budget hearing. So do we have any audience comments? Tim?
Fourteen ten Keller Road.
As they say, somebody's got to do it.
Well, thanks for sticking it out with us.
No, absolutely.
Tim Daughtry, fourteen ten Keller Road. There's only two, well, actually, there's three things. I like what the one lady mentioned, the money shot. At the park. Okay. One of the most impressive things going by Lake Clark Shores is on a holiday weekend when all the flags are up. And you can look right out on the lake, right through the flags. Okay. And I would hate to lose that. Okay. And I understand about. Buffering and noise and everything else, but it is a money shot. It really is. And then Bill mentioned parking, 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 parking. That park is a mile and a quarter from my house. It's a long ways to get there. It's a long ways to get there. So that, uh, the new bridge, I'm great, great. The bridge is open. I do notice something every time I go by there and it really bugs me. The elevations of the concrete walls on the west side of the bridge, there's something wrong there. Okay. They're, they're angular, angular, coming from the curves to the regular portion of it, and it's just not right. Okay. And I don't know what to say other than somebody didn't laser it properly when they were forming it. That's, that's what it looks like to me. Okay. And it bugs me. Okay. It bugs me as someone in construction. Okay. There's something just not right there. Okay. And then we were talking, I was talking memorials before about Malcolm and everything else. There's one other person in this town that needs to be memorialized, even though he's still here. And has given so much of himself to this community, Bob Xiahou. Where's his name on something in this town? Okay. His name deserves to be memorialized in this town someplace. Okay. Very important person for this town, been a big champion for this town for many, many, many moons. And gives of himself many, many, many times, especially during the barbecues and everything else. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know if this council feels, but I think that sometime in the future, should we move forward with this plan? That maybe we have a committee for the residents and the people who know the history and make sure that we do capture. All those that are there and all those who are not there. So we can move forward with that.
Love the idea of a committee.
Okay, any more? Comments from the audience?
No.
Email? No? All right. Any council comments? We have a a motion for the, to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's go to the consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to, I moved to approve the consent agenda. Item four B to.
Nine C.
Nine C.
If I could suggest.
To nine C per the town manager.
Okay, so. Nine C.
Got it. I will second that.
What is nine?
It's under.
Okay, B, C. So you, I'm sorry, we were trying to.
Yeah, let me.
Repeat.
Make it a motion, move to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. By moving with also considering moving option or item, agenda item four B to nine C for new business discussion. When we get to that point in the agenda.
Okay, and we have a second from. And all those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We move on to Jason?
Yeah, sorry, Jason. Took so long.
Yep.
How you been?
Welcome. Thank you for coming.
For being here, Jason.
Good evening, council. First, I just wanted to congratulate you guys on on opening the Pine Tree Bridge. As a local boater and a driver around here, I'm really pleased to see that get done. So. My name's Jason Andriata. I'm the Assistant Deputy Secretary of the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. I've worked for the Florida DEP for over twenty years now, and most of those years were spent in the West Palm Beach area. I oversaw the the Southeast District Office based right here out of West Palm Beach. And in the past couple of years, as Assistant Deputy Secretary, my job is now to oversee the the six district offices in the state. The primary function of of those district offices is to write environmental permits. So anything from Marina projects, dredging docks, mangroves, drinking water facilities, wastewater facilities, crematories. You name it. We 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 regulate quite a bit. Anything that would impact water, air, or generate a waste. So i- in in those past couple of years. I I've been able to see throughout the state wastewater spills happening, not just here in the southeast part of the state. They happen all over the place. So I'm going to talk to you a little bit today just about. You know, i- i- in the days following the spill that I'm here to talk about today, the six day spill from from last year, I got to be pretty friendly with Joe. I I was out there every day with Joe and, you know, he asked me more recently if he, I wouldn't mind speaking in front of you guys and. And kind of just talking a little bit about a cleanup that might be, you know, I I understand that that the residents just are concerned about that. I'd like to maybe address some concerns that they might have about a potential cleanup and just to talk about a little bit about some of my experience as a regulator of of wastewater spills. But but before I get in into any of that, just on on a personal note, I I do live in Lake Worth. I live in Vernon Heights. It's a a small neighborhood on the very north end of A Street. We back right up to the C fifty-one canal. We have a a little boat ramp in our backyard. Or in the neighborhood there. We're boaters. I have two teenage kids. They're out on the, on the, the lake more often than I am. And I I say all this. Because while I might not be a resident of Lake Clark Shores, I, you know, I consider the lake to be part of my backyard. So I do have a keen interest in its health. So I I just want to kind of recap the the spills that happened in in twenty twenty-four, kind of why I'm here to talk today. So a lot of times we overlook the first spill that happened. It was in February of twenty-four. And it was a sixteen inch force main that failed. We had about a three hundred and fifty thousand gallon raw spill in the L nine canal. It was a two day spill and it was nasty. Two months later, we had what y'all remember was a thirty-six inch force main that was struck by a contractor for AT&amp;T. This was right on Florida Mango by Mediterranean, right on the the L ten canal. Over a period of six days, about six, six point one million gallons of raw sewage spilled. Lake Worth Beach, this is Lake Worth Beach's pipe. And they did a really good job in in their emergency response. They were actually able to dike off. The 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 eastern side of where the spill was to somewhat isolate the spill. So the worst of it was the first couple of days when about, you know, two to three million gallons. Spilled and it could have reached into, you know, Greater Lake Clark. But because of their efforts, they were able to isolate a lot of the sewage into this little dyked area. And and pump it back into the system where it was, you know, sent to Palm Beach County for treatment. So. I was there every day with Joe. I have friends that live on Mediterranean. I was in their backyard. I was sitting on their dock. I was there to see it all. It was, it was nasty. It was not pleasant. The fish kills, the smell, everything. It was, it was bad. So it's kind of a recap of the spills. I want to talk a little bit about. Some of my experience handling other spills. If you guys remember in about. December of of twenty nineteen. Fort Lauderdale experienced a a series of of wastewater spills. One sprung up in a residential neighborhood. There's another one in a commercial neighborhood, another one in a park. There was a series of like six spills that totaled over two hundred million gallons.
Whoa.
Of raw sewage into surface waters. I looked at all those different spills because in the, kind of in the aftermath of that and how we handled the enforcement case with Fort Lauderdale's. We required them to do an environmental assessment to kind of see what the impact was. Any any residual wastewater that remained in the in the sediment of these water bodies and what the impact might be. So we did actually require Fort Lauderdale to do studies and they hired different environmental companies. To go out and evaluate each one of these water bodies and take a look at them and see what they could find. And so rather than me going over the studies that they did. And so rather than me going over the studies that they did for everyone, the one that most closely kind of resembles the spill that you guys had here was a spill in the Hamashi Canal, uh, which is in a kind of a commercial area of Fort Lauderdale. It was a thirteen million gallon spill that happened over the same amount of time. It was like a five day spill. So um, E Sciences went out and they they did a study about ten months after the spill. And they took core samples to see if they could visually see any of the residual wastewater that that kind of remained in in a core sample. They also did water quality sampling. They did, they ran like video transects with rovers. Uh, it was a full assessment to see what kind of impact they might have. Visually, they were unable to discern any uh, layer of, you know, wastewater residual uh, that that remained in the Hamashi Canal. They were able to find some uh, fecal uh, impacts, fecal coliform from just, it could have been from the spill. It could have been from just this being in a commercial area and kind of what you would expect to see in a water body like this. So I I tell you all of this um, not to minimize the impact from the, you know, the the six day spill that that y'all experienced down here. Sorry. But I I really want to try and clear up any misconception or or I'm sorry, any any perception that there might be that there's an inches thick layer of, you know, human excrement or whatever that is on the bottom of the L ten right now. There is no doubt that there is a water quality impact from these spills. Okay, so in the case of Fort Lauderdale, we had them do water quality improvement projects to to clean up the water. We we never did have them go out and clean up, you know, sucking up, dredging up, whatever. We we didn't have them do that because you really couldn't tie the spills to what was in the water body there. So instead, we had them do other water quality projects. So again, I I say all this because I think that there was a water quality impact, most likely from these spills to Lake Clark. But not nearly the impact that the septic tanks are having on Lake Clark right now. So Lake Clark was impaired for um, chlorophyll A and nitrogen long before these spills happened. So there there already was a connection to the to the pollution and the water quality impairments that these septic tanks contribute to Lake Clark long before the spills happened. And you don't, you know, you don't need to hear this from me. I I'm a local. I I I do this. I do this for a living. I I look at at, you know, these spills. But last year, you guys had a um, an info session. It was a septic to sewer info session, middle of July. And you had some really credible people sit on that panel, Aubrey Arrington and Myra Folsom and 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 Bill. So I I think that my opinion um, kind of aligns with theirs in that I I I think that you could really benefit from a cleanup. If you if you guys wanted to go in and do some kind of bottom removal, you know, and get rid of those legacy nutrients that are on the bottom of the lake, you'll see some benefit. But I think what you need to do first is focus on the the problem that is persistent, that is continuous, that is happening now. I'm I'm going to butcher Aubrey's uh, example that he shared during the info session, but it's it's akin to 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 us having a sickness, but also bleeding, you know, and and not triaging the bleeding and taking care of that first before we take care of the sickness. So I I I really think that the bleeding that is happening right now are these leaky septic systems. Like I said, the lake has been impaired for for the things that are directly connected to to leaky septic systems. I have met with with Joe and and Rep Tendrich is here and I've 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 met with Richard Pinsky to to kind of just express my opinion and what you guys, I think, need to focus on, which again is prioritizing the the septic to sewer uh, conversion and then any kind of uh, lake bed cleanup. The agency I work for handles a lot of grants. We handle um, low interest loans. Uh, we also do all the watershed assessments and things like that. My shop is is regulation and, you know, regulating wastewater facility spills like this, the enforcement action that comes after it. I am trying to connect Richard and Joe and Rep Tendrich with with the right people in our agency to try and get you guys the resources you need to address these problems. Anyway, that's that's really all I have. I I just wanted to kind of share, you know, a little bit about my experience, you know, the the days that we were handling those spills. And um, you know, I'm I'm committed to working with 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 Joe, with with Richard and with Rep Tendrich to to try and get you guys what you need uh, on the right path.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Thank you for your time as well.
Thank you.
Jason, could I ask you a quick, quick, quick question? And and we're so grateful you're here and 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 sorry that the, you know, the the earlier meetings went long. We 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 hear you saying loud and clear that uh, septic is is a hu- huge issue for the quality of water in the lake. How much of an issue is runoff and fertilizer and, you know, Lego and
It it all contributes. So you guys are at the end of the line here. You know, you've got the spillway that is just to the east of you and you've got this huge drainage basin in the Lake Worth drainage basin that all drains into the C fifty-one. And so it all comes down this way. So you've got ag runoff, you got all kinds of runoff happening west, all coming this way. So it it's not just your septic tanks contributing to your your problem right now. It's upstream. So there are, there are ways to address that. You know, the 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 folks that have permits that allows them just like uh, Lake Clark Shores might have an MS four permit that allows um, basically um, stormwater collection and and discharges into surface waters and things like that. We can make sure that the permit holders are compliant and that they're meeting, you know, the conditions of their permit to kind of minimize the upstream impacts. But you guys here have have a very localized problem as well. So while there are there are other outside contributors, you have a very localized problem here that is not really unique, that there aren't a whole lot of waterfront communities that are left that are still on septic. So it, you know, it's it really is, I think, in your best interest to to focus on that.
Would we see a noticeable difference? I mean, Bridgette and I both live on the main lake and in the last year or two, you can't see the bottom anymore, but you could two years ago, you could see the bottom. How much of, you know, can you assign percentages to all these various factors of and how?
Yeah, and you're going to see during different times of the year, you know, in the summer, when the water's warmer, you're just going to see you're going to see more growth in the water and so it's just not going to be as clear. It might be clear in the winter time. It it's it's hard to say that you're going to see it like, you know, as soon as you take that last septic tank out, like you're going to see a clear water the next day. It's it's going to be some time. And it might take a little bit of cleanup. That's when I think you you might need to focus on some cleanup and um, and and, you know, working on the legacy nutrients that are kind of bound up in the lake bottom.
Hopefully you can help us find some money.
I I will, we'll, we'll work with with Richard and Rep Tendrich to 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 work on that. Yeah, I will.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Take care, Jason.
Okay, long awaited. Chief Martinez.
Since we have two meetings this month, I'm doing a video presentation this month um, on this one. And it's six minutes long.
Okay.
And it's just basically a little clip of what uh, your department offers you. Uh, we're not just firefighters and it's just a little just shows a little extra of what we do. So I just wanted you guys to see it. Six minutes. I'll leave all the other boring stuff for next meeting.
Sounds good.
And I wanted to give a shout out to her. She's been running for two hours. That's unbelievable.
I I admit I saw a little bit of it. I I'm 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 a retired firefighter and I thought it was very exciting. So I look forward to it.
Can you turn it up a bit or?
Can we make it louder, Robert?
And we're here when you need us the most, responding to just about every emergency you can imagine. With fifty-one strategically located fire stations crossing more than eighteen hundred square miles, we serve the visitors and residents of Palm Beach County in their greatest time of need with integrity, unity, compassion, accountability, and dedication as our core value. Our units respond to nearly one hundred and sixty thousand nine one one calls a year and growing. We are in all hazards, all emergency response, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. All of our first responders are cross-trained in firefighting and emergency medicine, which means a more efficient system to mitigate fires, all kinds, buildings, cars, brush fires and wildfires, vehicle accidents. Firefighters are skilled at using the jaws of life to free trapped occupants. We respond to all kind of emergency medical calls, everything from slips and falls to cardiac arrests. We are an ISO class one rated fire department. So what does that gold number one stand for? For the community, it means peace of mind, knowing you have the highest level of fire and life safety protection available. We score among the top point oh one percent of fire departments nationwide. As always, we are poised and ready to continue breaking new ground in emergency medicine, meeting the communities need time and time again. We now administer whole blood and plasma transfusions in the field. Our cardiac arrest survival rates are higher than the state average. And that's not all. We respond on land and in the water with an airboat, dive rescue teams and jet skis. In the air, it's Palm Beach County Fire Rescue, paramedics and nurses that treat patients on both of the Palm Beach County Healthcare District's two aero medical helicopters known as Trauma Hawk. We have highly skilled, advanced hazardous materials teams that handle special operations, chemical or fuel spills and leaks, strange chemicals or white powder substances, biohazardous conditions, explosive devices or explosions, working directly with the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office Bomb Squad. We conduct high angle rescues, rescuing someone stuck up high or down low in ditches. It's called trench rescue. We rescue small animals and large animals, everything from ducks to horses. Our nine one one dispatch center inside the Emergency Operations Center answers more than two hundred and thirty-six thousand nine one one calls overall each year while dispatching for an additional thirteen municipalities. Our highly trained dispatchers can walk you through CPR over the phone or even delivering a baby. Operators always immediately dispatch the closest trucks while still on the phone with you, using a high-tech mapping and GPS system. Our cares team provides emotional first aid on the scene of nine one one calls, bringing compassion for family members. And after a nine one one call, our mobile integrated health team, community paramedics and medical social workers follow up to connect patients with resources that provide long-term solutions. Florida knows storm seasons all too well. Palm Beach County Fire Rescue is an integral part of everything from hurricane preparation to response, clearing roadways and downed power lines, to going door to door to get people out of areas with structural damage or floodwaters. We want you to feel safe. We're here to help you get prepared and we're here to rescue you if you get stuck. Our emergency management division prepares and advances our involvement in everything from storms to pandemics and homeland security. At our state-of-the-art training complex, we host large-scale disaster exercises, preparing for active shooter terrorist attacks, fire and law enforcement working hand in hand. It is our duty to protect you. Palm Beach International Airport has been pretty busy lately and fire rescue is a big part of safety during presidential escorts. We have a full fire station to respond on the tarmac and in the terminals. We carry specialized fire suppression systems specific for jet fuel on these unique airport firefighting trucks called Dragons. Our Palm Beach County Fire Rescue Fire Investigators are deputized with PBSO, carrying weapons and arresting arsonists. Fire investigators dig through hundreds of fire scenes each year, closing more cases than the national average. We also run a youth at-risk program, intervening when kids are involved, teaching them about the dangers and the repercussions of starting fires. Our community risk reduction division also inspects more than thirty-three thousand buildings for fire and life safety hazards, keeping you safe. We work with local businesses before and after construction to make sure buildings are safe and up to code. Our community educators deliver safety presentations on fire safety, hands-only CPR, carbon monoxide awareness, and how to properly install a car seat, just to name a few. The Drowning Prevention Coalition works with Palm Beach County Fire Rescue to provide free water safety education and free and reduced cost swim lessons. We want to give you and your family the knowledge to prevent bad things from happening in the first place. We wouldn't be able to make all of this happen if it weren't for all the work done behind the scenes by support services at our administrative complex and at the shop, maintaining our fleet of more than five hundred vehicles. It is an honor to serve the citizens of Palm Beach County. We do it with dignity, compassion for each other and for our community and pride in our country and our mission. The men and women of Palm Beach County Fire Rescue are so proud to be your fire department. Our vision for serving Palm Beach County, excellence today, improving tomorrow.
So that was a small video on kind of what we do. Um, I can answer any questions if you had any. Uh, but it was just so you you get another perspective of fire rescue, not just, I think we're firefighters and that's it.
I think Taylor's in
I didn't need that video to know you guys are awesome, but you guys are awesome. And I, since your presentation on whole blood, I have told so many people about. I think it's really incredible uh, what you guys do for us.
Thank you.
Chief, by the way, I was at Palm State College with Representative Weinberg and we got to repel. And um, we got to it was it was incredible. I loved it. And uh, we got to see a little bit of the training that you guys go through and all the stuff they put you through. It is, it is extensive. Another chief, we got to go through the simulator for shooting guns and arresting bad guys and that thing is incredible. It's incredible. It's the best video game you've ever seen in your life. And it's wild, but anyway, it was fun. Thanks, chief.
That's so much cooler than the library trip that we're taking.
I I I am very proud to have you our department. You know, my background from Miami Dade, we're very uh, similar uh, department. But I'm still proud to, I, you guys have taken it out of the ballpark, the the plasma and the blood people. I don't know if Palm Beach County residents know how unique that is and how life-saving that is. It is a, it does make a big difference, especially in trauma patients. So thank you for everything you guys do and I'm I'm proud that we have you as our uh, fire department.
Awesome. Thank you for having us. Um, also on yesterday's bridge opening, just uh, CAD's updated on our end. Units will start responding as normal because we had switched it up before because of the ridge closure. So now it's back up and running. All right?
Thank you, chief.
I wish everybody a happy football season as well.
Yes. Appreciate that.
Okay, we'll move on. We have no quasi judicial proceedings. We have no public hearings, no unfinished business. And we have new business. Uh, first reading of ordinance twenty-five, twenty twenty-five oh two.
We'd like to have Mary read the title, please.
An ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Lake Clark Shores, Florida, amending chapter ten building and reg- building regulations, article two, construction standards, division three, permits, certificates of occupancy and inspections, section ten dash ninety-one, building permits required to provide that a building permit must be obtained prior to performing any specified work or activities, providing for inclusion in the code of ordinances, providing for separability, providing for an effective date, and for other purposes.
And Mr. Babello, your town presentation?
Yes, thank you. Um, back in May, you asked the town attorney and and staff to look into changing the ordinance or the code on allowing people um, to actually have a permit in hand if they're doing work without a permit because there could be abuse if they just apply for a permit and they don't actually have a permit. Because you could just file for a permit wherein it's not complete and we can just, the violation can just continue and continue. So I think this is a a good safety and a public interest that we we approve this ordinance.
Any audience comments? Do we have any email? Council comments? Council comments? So consider a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance.
I so move.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, discussion of the removal of stop signs.
I could start if you want. Last month, you asked us to to put this on the agenda and we did. So we we put a little quote in there, what what happened in the late twenty-three, twenty-four study. And it's up to council to direct staff on what you'd like to do next. We're here to answer any questions and help you also.
Just a. The 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 study, you know, said that stop signs are not a traffic calming device. And in fact, can actually lead to speeding between. I don't think it's necessary. I think it's, you know, you barely just come into town off of Forest Hill and there's a stop sign right there. You know, there's no line of sight issue because the 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 sign would still have to remain on Venetian, you know, as as their signs on Beta and 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 some of the Mica streets. So I just think it's an unnecessary stop sign.
Can you discuss the cost and?
Sure. I actually called Mr. Kelly today just to get some guidelines. Because I asked about a couple of things. My idea was the process more that do we need the stop sign or do we not need this? But stop sign more about the process, because should we look at these things on what kind of interval? So he said you should look at things on a three to five-year interval. So it's only been a couple of years. So you can wait or we can look at this one individual item. Because he would have to go out there, look at line of sight issues if there's any and make a recommendation. It'd roughly be about fifteen hundred dollars if he took this by itself.
And I would point out also that the the study noted that we had a great many stop signs more than we needed.
It 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 did. It's, you know, there's two sides to that. It said, obviously, he said, things are working. So he didn't recommend a change because we don't have a speeding problem. And he thinks we had a proper amount of traffic calming devices. And he did state that stop signs are not a traffic calming device, correct? So it's just always good to look at a professional and get their guidance through these things. So I'm looking at process, not if this stop sign is good or bad. It's just what is the process? Do you want to? We should look at these at what kind of interval and or do we want to take this separately? That's my only question to staff.
So you're you commented that doing the one stop sign would be fifteen hundred if we look roughly. If we proceeded to do further as we did before, even though it's not met the timeline, do we know what the cost was previously?
Well, it was it was we did. We focused on traffic calming in two thousand twenty-four, two thousand late twenty-three. And it was really a traffic traffic calming. Do we have enough traffic calming? Do we have a speeding problem? So that was our focus. It wasn't stop signs. But if we did another scope, we could say, you know, can you look at all our stop signs? Even though he did mention stop signs, because, you know, he even gave us this chart of how many stop signs we have. But it's it's whatever you'd like to do. It's it's just, we shouldn't look at this every year. We should look at it, in my opinion. My recommendation to you is, you know, how frugal I am. I'd like to look at this. It's at a something that makes sense, three to five years.
So my only concern, and I obviously there's the traffic side of it versus public safety too. Like, I don't I don't know how the police department feels about stop signs and those that. But what Mr. Harrowett said when he had his comment, which is, shouldn't we like be addressing all of these then? As part of a plan, are we just going to spot pick which ones? I'm just erring on the side of caution when it comes to something that is like for us potentially and not necessarily part of an overall plan, like that stop sign you that is your opinion that you do not think that stop sign needs to be there, correct?
Correct.
So I'm I just don't want to set a precedent with me coming in next month saying, I don't like this at the end of my street and it doesn't need to be there. And, you know, so sticking more with a process feels more appropriate to me. Unless they said to us, you do not need that exact stop sign, that stop sign can be pulled out. Which I don't remember because I they didn't say that there is a stop sign.
No, he recommended no changes except for changing the tables, I mean, changing the humps to tables, which we're doing.
As we replaced.
As we replaced roads.
You have any comments, John?
I I do not. I know.
Welcome.
I actually do have a comment. Morning milk seventy-five thirty-one pine tree. We me and my kids hang out at the corner of Beta and Pine Tree and.
Say that again.
Beta and Pine Tree.
Pardon me?
Beta and Pine Tree.
Yeah. His kids and him hang out at Beta Pine Tree.
The house with the big flag, like those. I've called Dana multiple times about people flying through that stop line. I think that that intersection, as far as pine tree as a whole, might be the biggest problem. I think that you can eliminate the stop sign in Venetian, can eliminate the stop sign that Keller and the one over in Mediterranean, you're going to slow down anyway, going around that bend. But I think that particular one, for some reason, I just want people blow through it.
Which one? Beta or?
Beta, Beta and Pine Tree.
Okay.
Beta and Pine Tree. And we we actually, I got a for Christmas, my brother-in-law got me a.
Radar gun?
No, train horn, like one of those battery-powered train horns.
Yeah.
And I gave it to my neighbor who lives on the west side where there's there's some intersection. And there's a remote, so I gave it to them and the kids play with it. And everybody that swings by or flies by that stop sign, they run their garage or they're in the roundabout in their driveway. And they hit the button every time somebody flies by there. And I hear it from two houses down, so.
But I bet if Tim was here, he would say that Keller one needs to stay. And that's sort of my issue with a spot picking, which stop signs.
I don't disagree. I just feel like if you look at the straightaways, I think the straightaways are the ones that really need the speed humps or speed tables or if you want to call them. But, you know, we have little kids here and I think that you have kids, I have kids.
Yeah.
You know, I mean.
I just like the idea that we paid an expert to tell us what's wrong and what isn't wrong and what's working and what's not working.
Stop signs aren't the issue. I think that stop signs at Venetian Mediterranean, you can pull those out. And the one at Keller needs to be extended so you actually see down the the Keller Bridge. So I drive now that I've driven that way more than I have driven, you know, it's a bridge.
Yes.
But I will say that Beta Circle or Beta, was that Beta North? Beta North, forgive me. By the house with big flag.
Yes.
That intersection right there is a major issue and there's a lot of young kids there. So however you feel might be the necessary, you know. Revenue there, I think.
Causing a problem at that?
It's it's non-residents. It's it's Amazon drivers and delivery drop.
Non-residents. We're talking about two different stop signs right now, right?
Yes, yes, correct.
We're talking about Venetian and Pine Tree.
Not Venetian and Pine Tree, you can get rid of.
You're talking to, you're just talking.
Beta, Beta and Pine Tree is the one I'm referring to.
So then how do we address that when everyone has a different opinion on?
I think Beta and Beta and Pine Tree make that a like a turn turn stable, whatever you want to call those things. They have a Cape roundabout there. I'm just saying, like, they created it or something, but I'm just saying, people, I mean, the cop sits there every day and pulls people over. Like, it's it's really, I pull some people I know over too. So I'm just saying, like, nobody stops at the stop sign. And it's a big problem because you have young kids on one side, you have young kids on the other side, down the block. And I mean, it's just. Yeah, but that one's that one's a straightaway. I mean, that's a straightaway.
Stop at stop signs. You know, I think it's important. I I'm not an expert. The expert told us, leave the leave the road plan.
I live there. I live there. And I'm telling you, like, I I thought it was funny at first, giving them that train horn. And the amount of times I hear.
But you're saying leave the stop sign, right? At where you live?
The stop sign is not doing anything. People are running through the stop sign.
So you think hold the one out at Beta too?
Hold the one out Beta and do like a hump, you know, a significant sort of speed barrier or something. But that's that's all I'm saying. But that one in particularly, I live there. So having young kids and having young neighbors and that one, I think is. I mean, why why have a cop sit in my driveway? Well, we don't need to. So he pays for his, his promise. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess I'm going to go back to just because of being very concerned about doing something and then like a week later, there's some accident. I don't know. I just feel like if the experts said it's safe and okay as it is, I don't want to like set a precedent with spot treating. I'm not saying that's the right answer, but that's, I guess.
But the expert actually did say we had too many stop signs.
He didn't say which one.
He didn't say which ones, but this could be, you know, this could be a nice gift to the residents of Pine Tree who put up with eleven months of nonsense.
Are you saying all the residents of Pine Tree believe that stop sign should go?
I don't have research on that, but.
I mean.
You barely just come into town. You know, you you you're ten feet past the bridge when you hit a stop sign.
I mean, I'm also not like the end-all on this, on this council. I just get very anxious about having multiple residents giving us this needs to happen here, this needs to happen here, but one of us saying this at this spot. I personally am not an expert on the safety of the roads. We paid someone to do that. They said, you from there. I don't want to do the wrong thing and we pull one out and then there's an issue.
Well, Joe said we could go back to the expert and have, you know, for fifteen hundred dollars have him render an opinion.
On that one.
One.
On that one.
On that one, yeah.
Are we going to do that for Morning and Michael Harwitz? Who had their own? I'm just saying, we're setting a precedent by by spot treating this fifteen hundred dollars at a time. That really should be all of Pine Tree Lane. If there's too many stop signs, they should be assessing all of the stop signs. Which ones are critical and which ones are not, not based on my opinion or one resident's opinion, but based on their expert opinions.
The Pine Tree does have a lot more stop signs than 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 Westlake.
Yeah, I I mean, I think we can define there's, they said there's too many, but they never said which ones would be safe to pull. Or do you put? Stop signs help with the safety of the roads and like, I I feel like we're treating them like they're not there for a reason.
I would I would imagine, now, let me just say, I've never seen cars travel southbound from Forest Hill Boulevard through Venetian because the intersection's only been open a couple of days now. But I but I but I imagine over the years, those stop signs were put in there for a reason. And if we had a reduction in crashes or conflict between pedestrians, bicyclists and cars, I don't can't say whether it's a causation or correlation with those stop signs. So I would rely upon an expert in the field to render an opinion on that rather than just picking and choosing which signs you want to leave or which side you want to plunk out of there.
And and I would say to that point, I think having a process is key. And typically, what we've done in the past is go to an expert, they give us an opinion and we implement. I think process is the key here, always having a sound process. Otherwise, you know, we'd be flipping stop signs in. What about putting them in? Someone shows up one day and they want us to put them in instead of take them out. So I think process would be key, not that that stop sign needs not be removed. I would agree with that. And then Joe, my follow-up, that would be they're saying they're going to charge us fifteen hundred bucks per stop sign? That doesn't even make any sense.
He said roughly for that one, he's very familiar with the the town.
Okay.
So he even brought it up on Google Maps and he said for that one, it would roughly be a fifteen hundred dollars. But obviously, there's economies of scale if you do the whole study.
Right, so. Yeah, I mean.
He even said that there would be. It was late twenty-three and the presentation in the council was January twenty-four. So but he did the work at late twenty-three.
What for that study?
I think it was about eighteen thousand. Yeah, these things are not cheap. That's why you should do.
Does a municipality typically do a traffic study?
He he, I like five years, but he said three to five years, so I have to repeat what he said. But I like, you know, but the focus wasn't on stop signs. So if you guys want to make the focus on stop signs and do it in a year or two, you know, it's you guys discuss.
Could we find out along the lines of the paving and what that looks like in the next year? What it would be just to focus on stop signs if we wanted to assess the stop sign situation, the cost of that versus.
Yeah.
Spot treatment. I just want to keep in mind all of the opinions of all of the residents when they're talking about each of their streets and and the issues.
And to the chief's comment, I know that some of the speed bumps and maybe some of the stop signs were put in by the the request of particular individuals and and not not because of an expert recommended them.
That's my understanding also from Chief Smith.
So here and everybody.
Are you saying that was one of them that you know?
No, I don't. Again, I don't have, but I I know that 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 historically has been the case, but I don't know which which ones are which. I know some of the speed bumps at the at the south end of of Pine Tree were.
Which probably cause is the causation.
In that.
Now be, we are the causation of there not being enough or just.
To that point, I believe, Joe, we created a process for the speed humps or speed tables. Didn't wait for like, hey, if you want a speed table, here's a process, we'll go through review. I think we probably should need, we need a process for the stop sign business as well, because at the end of the day, let's say we remove them, we do the study, we get some removed. I sure enough, there'll be a resident that shows up and say, hey, I want this stop sign, my kids are playing and like, it's, you know, crazy. And then they're it's fast or whatever they're going to do. But I think we need a process to make sure that we can honor that resident by reviewing that and going through whatever we need to do. The process is similar to the speed table, speed hump process that we created recently.
I totally agree. But that is, that is, I totally agree, but that is the process. You 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 hire a professional to to every it's the, you know, three to five years and they they look at the roadways.
With all that said, I'm hearing everybody here and I hear the residents want something done with the stop signs. And being prudent with our fiscal responsibility, we just finished the bridge. We're looking at paving the roads and we're replacing, we're putting tables where there's humps. I think, and with the recommendation from the traffic engineer, that the normal process is three to five years. I think it's premature. Let's let's get through the paving of the roads. Let's get through the speed humps and the measures. Then, I don't know, if you want him to look at it now, you want him to look at it future, but I just think it's premature. You know, we're trying to, you know, hone in our fiscal responsibility after just putting the bridge in. We're getting ready to spend two hundred thousand dollars on paving the road and putting speed humps in. I think I I would prefer to wait down the a year or two till we hit the three-year mark. But it's whatever the council wants and whatever the residents want.
Well, I I believe having a process. And it has nothing to do with spending the money or changing anything. A process is in place so that when those things do come about, you have a way of executing consistently fairly across the board. So that conversation needs to happen now, similar to the speed table conversation we had recently. And then to that point, that way, if a resident shows up here next week or whenever the next council meeting and asking for a stop sign, we have a process for that to happen. I think that process has nothing to do whether or not we implement this or what timeline.
Right, so that process costs money.
Well, I think it's important, whatever it's going to cost.
Yeah, it would. The process would go through staff and see if there's any. Staff would meet first and see if there's any recommendation to go to you to say to go to the the traffic engineer. And we, I could tell you on this one, we would say no, because we just had a two-year study two years ago that said we're okay with the stop signs.
So, Joe, do you recall the process we put in place recently for the speed humps?
Yes.
What what was that process vaguely?
It's it's resident-driven. So the resident comes to us and says, we think we want a speed table in front of their property. So then we we have to survey the the their neighbors.
Right.
And then to see if there's the the neighbors even want it first. And then it goes to a committee of staff. And then we see if there's a recommendation, we take the council, we've already done this. And we we already said we didn't recommend it and it stopped right there.
I'm familiar and I just wanted to put it on record from you. But if a resident shows up next week and asking for a stop sign, what's our process?
Same thing. I would say it's the same process.
Okay, so now we do have a process.
Yes.
You guys are talking about two different.
But that's, but that's. This this.
What you're saying is someone asking for one or removing one.
Right.
Yes, and and I agree that, because I've never heard of the speed.
Yeah.
Process either. And you're saying more of the overall traffic assessment, that's the process of.
It is two different things, correct?
Okay.
That we should have.
To do. So yes, I know every three to five years, they recommend a traffic study. Is it possible in a shorter timeframe to know what it would cost? In a shorter timeframe to know what it would cost to review if they gave us in that traffic study a year ago, two years ago almost? One of their bullet points was there are too many stop signs. Can we then ask for a review of which stop signs they would say are not necessary per public safety?
Sure.
Or traffic and what that would cost versus spot treating it? So that we would have the backup to say, it is safe for us to remove this, it is safe and it will also make everyone's lives better and Put that into, to motion with our, our paving plan.
I think there's, that's wise.
Sounds like a good idea to me.
Did he in a motion? Or do you just?
I, I think I see.
I'm asking him, whatever.
I don't need a motion. I, I see, I see, I see a consensus. So I, I will take it to Mr. Kelly and see, get a price and report back.
Okay. Looks like we have no status reports.
We have nine C.
Oh, nine C.
Nine C.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor.
He said deep.
If you would go to agenda item four B, approval resolution, appointing Mr. Murphy to the infrastructure surtax oversight committee. Literally, there's going to be one meeting, if that, for this oversight committee, or Surtax citizen oversight committee, and it's going to be phased out by the state. The reason why I wanted to move this off the agenda is because I wanted it for a process. That way, if anybody else in the town says, hey, man, I heard that was an open, why did, why did Mr. Murphy get it? Why, I wanted to do that. I actually filled out, because remember, we had people actually apply at one point to be on this Infrastructure surtax committee and they went through a process. If we have a process, whether it's from one meeting or two thousand meetings for one time or a million years, I think we need to go through the process. And that keeps the town honest that says, hey, we're not just randomly picking people out of the crowd. If you want an opportunity, Fill out the application, submit your resume, come in for the board. We're going to be fair about it. We're going to pick somebody. Like, I think this needs to go through that process.
I agree.
It just keeps us saying, hey, we're not picking any favorites here. Your resume says you're the guy for the job. There's other people that may want to serve that one day. I don't know. Mr. Murphy's probably going to be the guy who serves. And I get it. And it's probably an exercise in fertility in this whole process. Fertility, but really, the reality of it is, it's really not about Mr. Murphy or any other person. It's about the process And doing it the right way so that we can say, hey, we were fair across the board. The five council chose who they wanted. That's who gets the job, but we were fair in choosing it.
I actually asked Joe this morning, how did we advertise that? Because I wasn't even aware of the opening.
Right. And so, and so what I want to do, what I'm recommending is that we And we have Mr. Murphy's application and letter and all the good stuff. So we're not asking him to resubmit. But I'm asking that we put this out there and allow anyone else who wants that opportunity To be a part of that. And no one will probably apply because it's one meeting. But we did our due diligence. We did it the right way. We did it fairly to the community and we covered ourselves in case anyone asks.
I have no problem.
So.
We'll, we'll put it through the process.
Do we need to vote on it or?
No.
Okay.
No.
So we.
The only thing I was thinking of, I have a meeting in November. It's only going to be one meeting. It's, but let's go through the process.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you, guys.
Sure. Not a problem.
So we, we approved the motion minus that.
Yeah, that's not approved.
Okay. Okay, there's no status reports. There'll be a Friday, September fifteenth town council meeting. Any other council comments?
I do have just one. Congratulations to the staff. Joe, you worked extremely hard On that bridge project to try to meet the standard of the town and getting that thing open. Some things are unforeseen, took a little longer than anticipated, and you're still working on that project year to date. So your time here is not done. But I know we were going to wait to hear back from one of the residents while we were there taking pictures and doing all the stuff. Asked if there could be something for boats to understand the height of the bridge and the water depth and all that. I know we were going to give that to our engineer. Did he ever get back to you on that?
Yes, I, I asked not, not only the engineer, I asked several engineers. I asked the contractor because he builds bridges for a living. And since it's not what they would consider a navigable waterway, and also because the height does Fluctuate from eleven to thirteen feet, that he would recommend not to put signage.
Okay.
What?
Not to put signage, because.
And nothing even on the, on the bottom at the top?
I mean, what would you put?
I have no idea.
Don't they have those little strips that have, you know, the hash marks with the different, you know, depth heights on it that you?
But that's the height of the water.
He's talking about the, so the boat's top won't hit the bridge.
Right.
Right, so you don't know what it'll be at any given point.
But that's why they have those, those, those vertical strips with hash marks and, and amounts on them.
Right, but if you start at zero, the water line's here, and the water line's here, how do they know what that difference is? Where do you start that line?
Or, or, or you say, you, you do, I understand what you're saying. You put that device in the water And they calculate it to be twelve feet and they still go through and they smash their boat, you know, then we have liability. So.
I see. Okay.
Creates more liability than it's worth.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for checking on that.
My opinion, I mean, obviously, I'm not.
Yeah.
So.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to make sure we follow up on that for the resident.
No, it's a great question. Tell the residents a great question. And I asked not only one person, I asked, I think, four people.
Now, is there something that we could do informational wise on the website stating stuff along that lines?
I asked that question too, and they said there's bridges a lot worse than that one bridge. So there's, there's, so there's not one to do.
Yeah.
There's much lower bridges than that bridge.
Yeah. And then last comment, I noticed in the minutes per minutes, I am running for state house and District eighty seven, not for senate. So I've had a couple of people ask me if I'm running for senate and I am not. I'm actually running for state house. So just for the record on the minutes and clarity. That will be fantastic. Thanks everyone for staying in there and enjoyed it. Thanks, Council.
I mean, I think I've had similar comments in the budget hearing, but I know it's been a real go this year. Especially the last few months. And yes, we are still, still at it at the bridge. It's not completely the end of the road. But very grateful to staff. And I also saw our lovely upcoming calendar of events. Lots of things going on my calendar right now. So I think we're going to have a really exciting season for the Towneley Clerk short. So I'm really looking forward to The holidays are just a magical time here.
I agree.
I want to thank the staff also for the, for the, all the hard, hard work on the budget. And I live on the main lake, chief, and boat traffic and jet ski traffic was Fivefold this weekend, once the, you know, once the bridge was open. So I would hope that we can get some, you know, patrols out On the water, because I think it's going to get real bad now that the bridge is open in terms of the speeding on the, on the canals.
Understood. Thank you.
We're a lot of thank yous going on. I was thank the staff, the, everybody included, all the behind the scenes people, but also we want to thank our contractor. And all the subcontractors, even with the issues that we've had, they, whether you know it or not, they've been very Community oriented driven. They've tried to respond to the, the residents that live closer there to all the pounding, the vibration. They, those, the three people that are closest to us, as, as much as we've been inconvenienced on the roadways, they've took the brunt of it. So I want to thank the contractors for working with us. I know we also take, we took care of some of our residents. And I know there's a lot of work behind the scenes that We don't see. And Joe's really taken a lot of heat and he made this happen. We, we don't, I don't know, we understand how How much that meant to get that state to, to inspect that within an hour of us doing the ribbon cutting. That is phenomenal and unheard of. So As much as we've had our frustrations with everybody, I think, I think it all went well. We were only really one month behind. We were due to open August sixth.
August six. From the dead date, but I, I was saying July, so.
Right, so, so original date was August sixth. We opened September third. Yeah, we still have some fine tuning together. I saw the lights actually came in today. So now we're waiting for the next step to get somebody to install them. And then the railing is back to the contractor. So Hopefully he can get that expedited so we can get the, I think the bridge looks beautiful now, but I think after, when the fine tuning Little icing on the cake goes, it's really going to look phenomenal. So thanks to everybody for their patience, the residents for On all streets from Westlake who absorbed a lot of the traffic to Keller, who also absorbs some of the traffic.
Venetian.
And especially the Venetian, they've had, they had to take the longest route. So We're past this. Now let's move forward and continuing our improvements on the, the town. I think we have a lot of work to do and I'm, I'm looking forward to it.
Well said.
Any other, any other comments?
No. Everyone have a good night.
All right, we have a, a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second, you have a second? All his favor. I. We're done.